Good morning, ladies. We're live.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Good morning. It is Tuesday, October the 20th. We are here for a school briefing. We have Ms. Fisher and Ms. Patrica online. I'm sure the other board members will be joining us shortly. I do apologize that we're all not here for the people that are here in the audience. Today, we have three items in operations. One item in executive service, public comments, board member comments, board attorney comments, superintendent comments, good of the order, and adjournment. So, we're going to get started. We stated that we start at 1:00, and we will start at 1:00, and we appreciate you all being here and your time. Dr. Atkins?
Ms. Joy, not...
Yes?
Ms. Joy, this is Ms. Fisher, and I apologize.
Yes, I told them that you are online.
Yes, I know that, and I just want to know that I said yesterday at the meeting that it was at 2:00, and I deeply apologize.
Calendar for 1:00, though, Ms. Fisher, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Atkins?
Hey, thank you, Madam Chair. We will start out with Ms. Silk Cox here, who will give us a capital projects update.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members. This is Pre-K Preno and Dr. Atkins. This is your construction services.
I'm sorry, could you speak closer to the mic? Thank you.
We're going to start with my HVAC renovation project.
Push it there.
We still, yeah, we're still having a hard time hearing.
Can you hear me?
There you go. Thank you.
Okay. My projects are the HVAC renovation projects. We are starting Cape Coral Elementary, the renovation, and I'm hoping that GMP will hit Dr. Atkins' desk by the end of this week for signature. Once we get the GMP executed, we will start the direct material process. Right now, we're going over the submittals for the equipment for that school. We're ready to get started on that. Fort Myers High School, we are currently installing chill water piping lines within the classrooms. We have chases that we will cover those lines going down to the unit ventilators, and the crews are working there after the students leave from 2:30 to 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock at night. We have all the electrical breakers installed, and the previously installed chill water lines will be flushed and tested before we connect to the pumps. Aida Baker Phase 3 is complete. We are, we have all four schools up and running. They are at set point, cooling at set point, and I believe everybody's happy there. We have a punch list that we are going through, and we're in the process of the closeout documents. I want to thank Mrs. Gittens for coming out and visiting our site on September 29th. The team was very excited to show off our progress out there. It's going very nice. Building A, you would just be amazed. We're almost done with that building. The flooring's going in. It's painted. HVAC is on. The ceiling tile's in. Building B, we have the gym floor on site. It's getting conditioned to the air, which is on in that building. The basketball hoops are up in the gym, and the kitchen equipment is waiting to be installed after the floors completed. Oh, I moved on to Gateway High School. I didn't tell you that, but I guess you assumed. Building C is the Black Box Theater. We will have that air up and running by the end of the week, and as you can see, the figurines on the front of the building are painted. And I wanted the ballerina pink, but I was overruled on that one. The stadium bleachers and the press box is going in. The backstops for the baseball and softball fields are in, and the tennis courts are in. The volleyball pit is there. We don't have the sand in it right now. It actually looks like a pool at the moment. This is Elm Elm Middle School, which is Steve Hannah's project, and Building 1 and 2 is dried in, and all the mechanical rough ends are ongoing within those buildings as well. We had a successful topping off ceremony on September 23rd. Everyone came out. That was, it was a really good ceremony. It was fun. Jane Stevens Pre-K project is being done by Rob Tyler, one of our other project managers. That's two buildings at the sites that's being turned into a pre-K school. The site work is ongoing. They're putting a sidewalk all the way around the pre-K playground right now, and the rough dry, and the rough end in the drywall is going in in those two buildings. Norfolk Myers High School re-roof is actually being managed by Matthew Burbach. The re-roof over the cafeteria is 90% complete, and one of the phases for classroom area is 50% complete, and that actually got a kudos from the principal because they've worked so nicely with her around the testing times. So, he got a nice email on that. Steve Hannah is running the, this building, the LEPEC re-roof. They've done some testing, and once they get the testing back for the destructive performance, they'll start doing the design and the drawings for the re-roof documents. Cypress Lake High School is also being ran by Steve Hannah. He's had a few rain delays, but they did get the auditorium dried in before the rain came, and hopefully, they're back at work today. Is that it?
That's it.
That is the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher or Ms. Patrica, do you have any questions?
No, I have no questions, but thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's also a purchase, the change order report is attached if you have any questions on that.
Are there any questions on the change orders, ladies above?
No, thank you.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
No, thank you. Thank you so much, Tina.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hey, I think the next item on our agenda is the proximity plan, so I'll bring Dominic and Courtney up to do the presentation.
And I just want to take liberty real quick to thank you, Dominic, again, for going to the city of Fort Myers and doing that presentation. Thank you for doing that with me.
You're most welcome. I don't see it up there. Doesn't look like our PDF was loaded up. It was just a couple of slides, but good afternoon, everyone. I'm Dominic Chivelli for planning. Today, I have Courtney Gordon with me today, and then we have David Kates on the phone with us to give us a proximity, elementary proximity plan update. We had a couple of slides today. Today's update is kind of brief. Next month, we're going to have a full update for you all. It'll probably take a little bit more time, but we do want to bring you guys up to speed because we did miss last month. So, we're going to start off with Courtney here in a second if we can get... There it is.
Okay, you have it?
No, but I see it over there.
Yeah, I have it on my machine, so if they can show it off.
Ladies, can you mute your phones if that's possible, because there's a lot of feedback down here, over here? the delay is right now.
I can find it real quick. You got it? Go to school board. Go to school board.
Agenda.
There we go.
And then, over here.
Be of six.
There you go.
All of it for two slides.
Do apologize for the delay.
It's okay. Thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you. We do apologize for the delay. My name is Courtney Gordon. I am the GIS specialist for the district and the district's project manager for the elementary proximity plan. We also have David Kates from Davis Demographics joining us via telephone today. Before I turn it over to David, who will give you more of an in-depth briefing, I just wanted to draw your attention to our updated timeline. So, this has been brought to your attention before, and I just wanted to let you know we have modified it slightly due to some additional meetings with our stakeholder groups, which are going very well. Basically, what has changed on this timeline is on the top line, the yellow arrow, July to November, that originally was July to October 2020. But again, we have been working diligently with the stakeholder groups, which includes members of the district and the community, and we've found the need for some additional meetings. Because of this, that will also push our public meetings out about a month, and at this point in time, we anticipate sharing our initial boundary scenarios with the public for feedback. And at this point, I will turn it over to David with Davis Demographics, and I thank you for your time and patience.
Thank you.
Hello, just wanted to make sure you can hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you accommodating me in this manner. Again, David Kates with Davis Demographics. We're the consultants that are facilitating this project. We're also the ones that are putting together all the initial GIS data and the forecasting and all the supporting information, which we did share with you about two months ago. It's hard to believe it's been two months. We didn't get to update last month, but we will be updating you about a month from now in November as well. So, to kind of catch you up on what we've been doing over the last two months, we did share with the board last time, like I mentioned, the socioeconomic and student data that we've been sharing with the stakeholders that we're using for our criteria to check equity and diversity. But then, we had to start focusing on, we need to start creating some initial boundary scenarios. We hadn't done that part yet. So, we strategized on how to best do this. I mean, we're talking about 60-plus people, 6-0, between the district stakeholders and the community stakeholders, and extended district staff as well. So, instead of having to do this in our COVID-19 socially distant environment, we were doing everything virtually for the last few months. Now, the district staff and obviously, the school board are reconvening in person, we're going to be doing that transition as well. I'll be sharing with that, our process in a few moments with you. But the last two months, we kind of had to figure out how to do this virtually. So, we decided to break the stakeholders up into three groups, and we decided to do it regionally. And your district is right now kind of naturally broken down into a west and east and a south region. So, we took the 30 district stakeholders and the 30 community stakeholders, and we decided to take 10, essentially 10 members from each group to form these three regions. So, instead of having 60-plus people per group, we had roughly about 20, a little more manageable. So, we would then meet for three consecutive days with one day for each group. So, let's say Tuesday would be the west group, Wednesday would be the east group, and Thursday would be the south group. So, we did our first round of meetings with this in mid-September, a little over a month ago, and these lasted about an hour and a half. And I shared with them, again, some of that initial information that we shared with you as well, the socioeconomic and student data. But we also zoomed in to those specific regions with each group, and we tried to come up with initial, these scenarios where we were kind of grouping three, let's say, three to four schools per region, and trying to share with them and have some feedback and input from the stakeholders. Ultimately, at the end of the first round of meetings, each of the three groups on their own requested that the, what we're calling ourselves, a technical working group, which is Davis Demographics and seven key district staff, to go back to the drawing board and come up with some initial scenarios to share with the three groups on our next round of meetings. So, we did that. We took a couple of weeks off from these meetings. We worked very hard, and we really had a lot of meetings where the 10 of us or 11 of us kind of bounced things back and forth, and we came up with three initial scenarios to share with the stakeholders in our second round of meetings, which happened in early October. And that went very well. They, that kind of started the conversation going, like what they liked about this area, what they didn't like, the pros and the cons, and we did some slight adjustments. And before you know it, we were done with our second meeting, hour and a half time. It goes by very quickly, and at the end of the meeting, all three groups agreed we needed one more set of meetings. So, the third round started today. We literally just got done with the third workshop group with the west group today. Tomorrow, we'll be meeting with the eastern group, and then the south region group will be on Thursday. So, once those are concluded, and we're making some really good progress, we've already decided we're going to do our first in-person group meeting on November 10th. It's a Thursday. It'll be probably about a three-hour session, and the concept behind that meeting obviously is first to physically see everybody instead of virtually. We're going to be in a very large district room or office. We're going to be socially distanced and be very cognizant of people's feelings towards that, so we're going to have plenty of room in there. And the plan is by the end of that meeting is to have two to three, let's just say, initial plans or scenarios, maps, if you will, to share with the general public. As Courtney just mentioned, our, way back in February when we came up with our schedule, we were aiming for November to be our first public meetings, and it's just been shifted a few weeks. And considering we have another eight months to go, two weeks really does not really alter the overall deadline on our, on our presentation to the board in July. So, we moved it to probably early, mid-December. We're going to have three to four meetings strategically placed across the district. We're still trying to finalize the locations, but it's going to be essentially three to four exact same meetings held in a public place, probably a school cafeteria or gym, and allow the public to come in and look at and talk with some of us that have, you know, been working on these scenarios together, stakeholders, district staff, and then take their comments, collect them, and then we reconvene in January with the group with our new forecast that we're going to work on right now, and take a look at those plans and maybe make some additional adjustments and tweaks to those plans. So, we definitely welcome all the board members to, once we have those dates set, you know, attend one of those meetings. You'll get to literally see where we're at in the process. We are planning to come back to the board on November 17th to give you a little more detailed update on where we are, so almost exactly a month from now. We'll kind of do this kind of monthly at this point, but definitely by sometime in December, you'll get to physically see where we're at, interact with the public, and see where we're going on this project. So, I'd like to open up for any questions or comments.
Hi, thank you. How were these, the people in the stakeholder groups, how were they selected?
I just might need for additional staff to come in, but I relied heavily on district staff to compile the list of the district and the community stakeholders. They took a lot of input from different, you know, maybe even from board members as well as other key staff to come up with them, but like I said, we have 30 community stakeholders and 30 district stakeholders, a total of 60, as part of this process. I don't know if some district staff wants to comment further.
Staff, because I don't remember being asked as a school board member, who might I? How, so we have 10 community stakeholders at each of these meetings, and was I mistaken that he said 17 staff members?
Out of 60, that's what I thought you said.
Well, just to summarize again, we have, overall, we have 30 each, 30 district, key district staff, 30 community stakeholders invited. Now, not all of them attend, and we broke them up initially into three groups of 10. So, it's 10 of each, so 10, and then these regional groups we're meeting with, 10 district stakeholders, 10 community. So, altogether, it's 20 stakeholders, and each of these meetings add up to be the 60 altogether.
At any given meeting in the regions, so I'm going to ask staff how those were chosen, and if somebody would please note, I'd like to get a list of both the community members and the staff members, but I'm particularly interested in how community members were chosen.
We picked different community members through the different civic organizations that were out there, the government organizations that were out there, even some of the nonprofit organizations that are out there. And we did provide a list probably about two months ago, but we'll definitely send an updated list.
Okay, forgive me, I
No, no problem.
Don't remember that list, but maybe it wasn't in the front of my mind like it is now. Were these community organizations that expressed an interest, or, I mean, did you consult? I don't remember being consulted, like Ms. Vaughn, who might you recommend?
I don't believe that we actually reached out to the board members for recommendations.
Okay.
If we were approached, we certainly would have been listening to whatever was being asked of us, but we didn't solicit the board itself.
Yeah, we can only Yeah, we can only be, we can only approach you when-
We know about it.
-it's put out there, hello, do you have anybody you might want to recommend? So, okay, so if you would resend that list, including the list of the district stakeholders, and are those district staff or school administrators?
Both.
Teachers? What is that comprised of?
There's school staff, administrators. I don't believe there's any teachers, no. And then there's staff from our, our office here in operations and across the different divisions, academics and such.
Okay, and, and people also, they're from academic services as-
Correct.
-as well, because that's going to be hugely impacted by this. Okay, thanks. I'd appreciate getting that information sent. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So, everybody's clear what she's, what Ms. Vaughn is asking for? The, the list again? We're good with that?
Yes, we'll send that out for you today.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Gittens?
Good afternoon, and I, I will say that we do have one person in the east zone from the Eastly Co-op, because I did approach and ask about that. And I do have to say that our person that's on there is a, just a community member, not within organization, a parent, and it's very helpful, and I know he has, has been very complimentary of the process and of the group and what's going on, that there's a lot of hard work that's happening. I do feel, kind of like Ms. Vaughn though, that having regular people involved in there, some of the, you know, more community that's not just selected, would probably be a good idea, but my question has to do with, every time I've talked about proximity, I've always asked the question about how we will keep it equitable as far as once you draw your lines, how will you be able to maintain that academic equity? And I know that you're getting ready to do that, the, the lines and all, is what Mr. Davis said, correct?
That's correct.
That you're getting ready to do that? And I'm just, you know, wondering how, if you've had those discussions, what is the group saying about the ability to, to draw the lines, have the proximity, but still maintain academic equity without having to bus students here and there?
I'm going to address that first, then maybe Dominic can follow up after me. It's actually an excellent question and actually a very timely question, because there's two parts, I'm going to just kind of simplify this, of this process. The first part, a very large part, is drawing these lines, as you're calling it, making these boundaries. The other part that's just as important is, well, I'll just call it policies, determining what policies, in addition to these boundaries, that the community mem, the committee members are going to recommend to the board, you know, later next year. It's a two-part process, because even right now, let's be really honest, your existing boundaries right now, just in and among themselves, are equal and diverse, but the district has been able to achieve equity and diversity because of the policies along with the existing boundaries. So, they go hand in hand. So, we are right now mostly focusing on the boundary, the map part. Once we get a little more firm on what we are looking at the boundaries becoming, then the, we're going to segue into the policy portion of this work. We're going to be introducing to the stakeholders in our November meeting, the existing policies that the district has in place to achieve equity and diversity, and we're going to kind of segue into this, after the new year, maybe through the springtime, to come up with a set of policies that's going to achieve, like you're suggesting, the, the equity and diversity. It's kind of a, a two-part process, and they all work hand in hand.
Your answer, people in the community that look at this kind of see it, you know, very basically, and I've heard people say, okay, well, they draw the lines in this one area, like one of the areas that we have out in the east zone that is basically economically challenged and all of that. So, that's kind of the questions that come up, and thank you for your answer. Did anyone else?
I think David covered it. The next step would be after we determine the boundaries is what policies we'll use that may be similar to what we're doing now, or maybe a variation of what we do now in order to keep that equity and diversity piece.
Okay.
So, just, just for reference, you were provided the community stakeholders on August seventh.
Thank you.
Send that to you, though, as we indicated. I'm not sure if it's the most up to date, but we'll update it.
And just a, a little follow-up to that, to show how it does work to have the community members. The gentleman that's on the committee from east zone said that in your discussions one day, one of the things that they, the community members were, were able to add, when you were talking about boundaries, is the traffic flow. And he was saying that, he mentioned, well, you know, you want to be careful with this because traffic here is really bad, and that's where that community piece really, you know, comes in and is helpful.
Thinking that, do you have another question?
I have one more. You're looking at data and numbers to set the proximity, and right now, we have the, you know, the issue with all of the portables in, in the district. Is that being taken into consideration in that, I was told that in 2022, 23, I believe, that many of them will be retired as, or aged out? So, is that being looked at as a part of this proximity piece as well?
Well, our current capacity as it is, is what's being looked at, as well as the future schools that are coming online. We do have a lot of our, our current portables are, are aged out, and with our next five-year plant survey that we hope to do in the next eighteen to twenty-four months, we'll get rid of the rest of our portables that are on our inventory. That doesn't mean that we can't use the portables, just means they're not going to count against us when it comes for us requesting additional schools, and will no longer show as capacity for the district.
Okay, because once we own them, it shows as capacity, a seat.
For twenty years. And once they're twenty years old, they are more flexible space for the district to use, if they need to use them for classrooms, or they could use them for whatever they like, but they don't count against us when we do our five-year plant survey, and that's when we're going to the DOE to ask permission to build new schools. So, right now, or the last plant survey, we did have portables working against us. The next plant survey, we won't have any portables working against us.
Okay, and is that what, with lambs that worked against us and not being able to add those other seats?
Regarding the new building?
The new building.
Correct.
Okay, and I would like to request the list of the portables, but not just, we've gotten it a couple of times, but it's very generic. What I would like to just see is the list showing the portables, I guess by school, and their expiration date. In other words, how long that we intend to have these in this particular area. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Chevigny?
Yeah, regarding the committees, I would like to know how many parents are actually on that, on the committees as well, and then any parents that had disabled children, were they included in that, in the committee? I think it's really important that we're diverse and it's equitable, so without having any idea what, you know, who made the committees up, are involved in that, we really don't know that. But I mean, it's really important to have the parents' input, because it's their children that are being transported and, and everything, and that affects their children.
So, some of the committee members now are probably parents. We didn't single out parents only. These are some type of community member, whether I said, like, they would come from one of the nonprofits or one of the other civic organizations, groups in the area, but not necessarily that they were picked out as parents. They may very well be parents. We do expect to have our parental input from our public meetings.
Yeah, but I, making, I mean, just even bouncing things off, the parents should be, a parent should be involved in, in just bouncing those, those ideas off of, of them and what it's like. I, you're telling me there really is no, there's no parents in the, on these communities, and there's no teachers, so now it's just administrators? Is that what you're telling me?
Does your list, does your list-
That's probably correct.
...separate, separate parents versus non-parents, I guess is what-
Yeah, I'm just-
We have-
Disabled parents.
It didn't-
It has the organizations they come from on the list.
Okay, all right. Well, I do think it is important that parents are involved in some of this.
Okay, we hear you and understand. I mean, I think what the group attempted to do was just get a lot of input from very involved members of our community in terms of just the initial phase of putting together, you know, the, really the boundaries that we want to look at based on the preliminary information from Davis Demographics. I mean, we, we are going to, believe me, I mean, we're, we're not going to be able to do this successfully unless we get a lot of community engagement and support. You know, I, I was a part of this district, as some of you were, back when we used to have boundaries, and, you know, every time we had a boundary change, you'd fill up the boardroom and you'd empty the dais, because the people that voted for it would get elected out, because people were so upset. I, I remember that history, and so, so, I mean, your points are well-taken. Don't, don't get me wrong. I understand that we have to get the community engaged in this, we have to get community buy-in, because this is going to be a big change. I think we'll be better off, and it will make this a more sustainable, durable system that'll be more equitable for our students in the long term, but in the short term, you know, you're talking about some pretty substantial changes, and therefore, in order to do that effectively, you have to get the shareholder input. So, we, we definitely hear you, and I think that part of that process, you know, moving forward involves, involves those, those key stakeholders.
Well, and, and just for the record too, I'm very supportive of this change, so I'm not trying to, I just want to make sure that it's transparent and equitable, and that's really very important for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chevigny. Ms. Fisher, do you have any questions? Ms. Gittens, I'll get back to you. Ms. Fisher, are you still there?
I'm here. No, no, I, I have, I have reviewed the list, and I'm very happy with the presentation to this point. Thank you.
Ms. Trica? No? Ms. Gittens, do you have one more question?
Yes, I think in listening to what the superintendent said, and I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I think that even with you mentioning going back in history and how it was contentious when people found out, I, I feel that we need to look at how we do initial groups and, and determining information, because if people are involved from the beginning, they don't have time to sit back and say, well, what is this? And then it becomes a problem. So, I, I just think we need to look at who is involved and who the stakeholders are, because a lot of times when it gets to the community rollout, it's just that, a rollout, and everything is all set and everything is done, and that's where you get the pushback from the community, because they were not involved in the process. So, I'm just making that statement.
Thank you.
If you mind if I step in here a moment, I want to add-
Yes, please.
...to this conversation. Again, this is David Keats with Davis Demographics. I want to assure you, the last comment you just made will not happen. This, whatever you want to call it, rollout, as you're saying to the public, we're planning in December, this is just the first series of public meetings. This is, nothing is set. We're using this as our initial introduction of our plans that we all came up with together and really worked hard on, and have explanations for why we did this or why we didn't do that. We will take input from every public person that either attends those meetings or even maybe have an opportunity to look at these maps through your website if they can attend, and we will reconvene as a group, like I said, in January. We will look at every single comment, and we will group them and look at where the consensus lies. We're going to go back to the public at least one more time, maybe two more times. So, I just want you to realize that we're definitely getting input from the public, and we're not going to try to push these plans on the people. We want their input, and maybe, maybe during the process, we can maybe look at adding a few other key members to our group as we present to the public, but this is not going to be presented and say, okay, take it as is. There's definitely going to be an interactive process with the public.
Shift is the fact of saying that a key member of the community are the parents as well, and not just leaders of, of organizations, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keats. And again, this is, you have just put, the team that you have together right now are the ones who have, are doing the framework to take out to the public, to have the public input, then to bring it back and create what is ever, whatever is going to be created, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn, please.
Yes, just a comment and a question. The, the comment is, I, I wasn't here in Lee County when this was not a choice district, but I was part of a growing school district in suburban Dallas, and actually went through this twice with one school district, my own children, where they went to school, and then myself as a teacher, and that's, you know, teacher shifts and that sort of thing. And anyway, so I, I understand what a hot-button issue it is, but maybe if we could put out what we've just said here, that this is very, this is preliminary, that although we have these fairly narrow groups right now, that it's, it's preliminary, and it will grow exponentially larger, and, and just to put it out there in, in people's minds. I know if they're reading the paper, looking at our website, they're going to know, but we've, we've seen the explosions from other issues when parents feel that they weren't, even if they did have access to the information. So, I think anything we can do to, to let it be known that this is just very preliminary would behoove us. The question that I, that I have is, what should we be doing right now as a school district to ease this transition? The kinds of things I'm thinking about, if it were me, and of course, this is just my opinion as an individual, things like already making sure that our schools, our elementary schools who are going to be affected are already offering before and after-school programs, or that there is somewhat of a standardization among the schools in the kinds of clubs and special activities. And, you know, I know that there are always certain schools that are more or less community schools that need the wraparound services, the higher-level services, but there, there are certain baseline curriculum programs and, as I said, maybe before and after care, those kinds of things. Should it, should this be something we are working on right now to ease the transition? So, a school culture is used to having programs that they may not have had?
So, if you'd like, I can respond to some of that, at least give you an update in terms of what we have, have done.
Sure.
Good points, which is one of the reasons we wanted to start with the elementary level was because we did feel that the standardization in terms of the curriculum would be more, would be easier to do at the elementary level versus trying to do it at the high school level. So, we started there. One of the parts of the big five, of course, has to do with the expansion of before and after-school programs. That is also in alignment with this proximity, so that we can have some equitable efforts so that no matter where a kid goes to school, that be a quality after-school or before-school program offered. The other thing that we did is in terms of equitable, equitable opportunity, I think there was a big, that has been a big help, is the movements we've made to try to make sure that we are eliminating DA schools as best we can, so no matter what a student's address is, you know, they have an opportunity to go to a really good school. So, those are measures that we're, that we have been im- So those are measures that we're, that we have been implementing. We are, we are still in the process of doing that. So I think we've increased the number of before and after-school programs over the last few years. We, we have worked to standardize the curriculum at the elementary level and we've reduced the number of DA schools. There's still more work to be done, particularly as it relates to the after-school, before-school. But that's one of the reasons why work with some of our community partners is important so we can increase those opportunities.
Right. Because that's, that's huge for many parents that, no, my child can't go here. I have, I have to be at work at 6:00 a.m. or whatever and I have to have that before. Okay. And maybe Mr. Ke, Keats can add, is there anything else from your point of view that as a school district, we could be doing with our schools right now to ease the transition?
Well, keep in mind too, this is not to be implemented till the 2022, '23 school year. So once these boundaries are adopted, I think we're aiming for July of 2021, there's still a whole nother year, plenty of time for you to address these issues or topics. We talked about policies and you brought up a very good point. There's also programs too. And we want to make sure that through whatever we, boundaries we come up with and the policies we come up with that you approve, that there's equal access to special programs as well. Of course, that's going to be put on the, the onus of district staff to do, but there should be plenty of time built into our timeline for you to implement those additional programs or shifting of programs when these boundaries take effect.
To start earlier than later, just because, right or wrong, schools get reputations and that happens wherever you live. And, you know, it doesn't hurt to have schools that may have been not highly selected schools in, in the past. I mean, right now, start raising everybody up to similar high levels so that parents don't have the idea, well, you know, I don't want to go to that school because that's a terrible school. It's, it takes a few years for perceptions to change. And that's why I was asking that question. I'm being proactive and looking ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn, for that. Ms. Morgan, I'm sorry, I don't think I asked you, did you have, thank you.
I have no comments. Thank you.
Ms. Jivinelli, I know you-
That's a good presentation.
We have a couple more minutes. Do you have another question?
Yeah. Well, actually, I just want to make sure that, I mean, I'm, I feel like the board's being bypassed a little bit. I know we've been updated on this, but I mean, the committee, committee part, shouldn't a board member kind of be involved in some of that? Just so that we're, then it's reported back to us? I mean, I just think it's important because this is, changing boundaries is a big deal and proximity is a, a big, huge deal.
I guess, Dr. Atkins, can you answer that? Because I think it's, I mean, that's part of operations and you are, we are getting feedback from them all the time regarding what's going on. But can you-
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's part of the reason we do come to the board, you know, in these, to provide these briefings. And if, you know, if the board would like to, to participate differently, you know, we'd be happy to, to work with you to make sure that happens. You know, items such as, you know, workshops, briefings, other types of involvement, I, you know, I'm open to that suggestion, your stakeholders as well.
Well, I'm wondering though, I don't know if those have been recorded where if-
Yeah, are they being, that's a good question.
-if it behooves them to go back and look at it, could they do so or? I don't know if they have been.
David, have we recorded these, the shareholder meetings? Stakeholder meetings?
The workshops, we just, over the last month, they have not been recorded. Prior to that, they were recorded. So there are some recordings out there. The workshops, not, not, they have not been recorded over the last month.
Members wish to go and look at that, they would have the opportunity to look at the ones that have been recorded, correct? All right.
Sure.
But what's going to be the process? Are they going to record them all or no? I mean, it would be good for the community. It's not just the board members.
Mr. Keats.
It would be for the community.
Do you, is that your, under your privy, do you record them or not record them? Or is that us?
I'm sorry, you're asking me?
Yes, sir. Are you the one that's recording?
Well, in the virtual world, it's a lot easier to record.
Yes, sir.
You just literally hit a button and then they just record. We have been trying, on the, on the, we agreed that with the working groups that we did in the last month that we would not record these, the initial ones we did. Moving forward, we are going to be doing these more or less in person. So on the November 10th meeting, for example, I do not know what the plan is as far as if there's going to be a recording or not. I'd have to ask district staff that question. If it's virtual, yeah, I could obviously record any other virtual meetings.
Okay. And then I guess if it's in-face meetings, then we would not be prohibited to go into those meetings to observe if we chose to do so?
Right.
He did say that earlier.
No, absolutely. We can, we can also record here in the building.
Well, I'm just, I'm saying it for, I, I heard that, but I'm repeating it.
Yeah. But how do people, people know about it? That they, you know, we get, I mean-
He said earlier that we would be welcome to be at meetings, wasn't that?
Right. Could you say that?
We can, A, make sure that you know when these meetings are, okay, and their location and so forth. If we do have meetings that are in this building in particular, I know that, that just like with our advisory committees, you know, we can arrange to have them recorded. Gets a little bit more difficult if you're going out to other locations, but certainly we have the capability here.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan, please.
Yeah, I would just like to hear from the board attorney with respect to board members attending these meetings.
I think this is a work in progress that they're just trying to come up with a plan to pro, provide recommendations. I think that they have secured individuals to participate in these groups. I, for one, am part of the South Proximity Group. So basically during these meetings, they kind of go through various scenarios. Do you like this drawn out better than this one? Why? There's discussions on traffic, there's discussions on how many kids in that particular geographical area. So I think this is a work in progress. And I think that at some point, it will come to the board, it will come to the community as was stated, and then we can have some more discussions. But I think these preliminary meetings are really just a work in progress and just trying to get the lay of the land.
All right. Okay, Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, that wasn't really my question. My question was, if you're starting to have community meetings in public and you have multiple board members there, what is the caution you would provide-
With regards to sunshine. I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question. Obviously, this has to be properly noticed because these will become public meetings when you have more than one board member present. And this is definitely something that will come before the board for a vote. So there are precautions that will have to be taken.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking that question. Okay, if there are no other questions, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Vaughn, you have one more?
Based, based on what Mrs. Dupree Bruno just said, could that November meeting be publicly noticed so that any of us who felt like we wanted to sit in as observers could do that?
Does that also open it to the public?
If it's, if it's going to be a meeting with board members present, it must be noticed and it's open to the entire public.
Yeah. Is that a problem or I'm just-
This was, this is more of our internal meeting with the stakeholders, not a public meeting.
So it's not something that board members could just sit and observe?
I wouldn't have a problem with the, with the board members sitting and observing, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily want public.
Not as a participant, just as an observer?
Depending on, on whatever council says it's okay for you folks to do, I don't have a problem with it.
But it has to be noticed if we do-
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking. It's not a public meeting, but could a board member go, for instance, I'm, I do EDAC, but if a board member wants to come sit and observe an EDAC meeting, that's fine. Right?
I, I believe that's also a public meeting.
It's a public, okay, it is publicly noticed, so-
I think that the difference here from my perspective and, you know, I'm, we're willing to do whatever, but in my opinion, this is a, this is a working group that's trying to work on a presentation or a proposal to, to recommend to the school board. You know, advisory committees are advisory committees. They're not necessarily doing that type of work and they're open to the public, et cetera. This one, we, we really are trying to work on what that concept is going to look like to present to you. And then, once we have that, then of course, we would-
Okay. So, yeah, so I made a really bad analogy. I'm just going to go back to my original question. Is, so there is a problem if it's not publicly noticed, if a school board member just goes and sits in as an observer, just-
Because this is some, I'm going to be very conservative with regards to sunshine.
Okay, yeah, please.
So because this is something that can be brought before the board for a vote, more than one member of a board, it has to be very careful in coming to these types of events. There have been cases out there, for example, where board members took a bus trip, everyone was separated, there were no discussions, they were taking a bus trip to see a zoning issue, and they got hit with a sunshine violation. So I'm, I'm very conservative with that. I would prefer that board members not attend. If you are going to attend, then we need to make it a public meeting, notice it, public to be invited to observe the discussions.
Okay. I, I understand. Thanks. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on it.
All right. Ms. Jivinelli, one more question?
Then really just, then if it's recorded, that would eliminate any of us having to attend and what Ms. Jordan brought up. So I think that would be sufficient because I think we do need to be involved and we need to be able to see what's going on. I think this is important discussion. I, I think the board needs to be in the loop. I don't think we should be out of the loop of this, in my opinion. So I may be wrong. I don't know. And we, and it's not that we're going to give an opinion, it's that we, it's for the, so that we don't have this conversation again. So it's our understanding.
Right. So is that something that we can possibly take care of and have the recording? I know-
The November 10th meeting, we'll, we'll have that recorded here in the building.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate all of that. And then whoever would like to look at it then, at that time, can take it. David, thank, Mr. Keats, thank you so much for being here with us. Really appreciate all you're doing. Thank you, both of you over there. Appreciate you. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher?
Ms. Jordan?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, the recent part of the conversation just brought me to a question that I have for Attorney Dupree Bruno. So as staff and consultants, you know, I'm sorry, but I have a very bad echo. Okay. All right. I wanted to know, as staff and consultants are preparing information to be presented to the board for something that will be moving forward after that point, I, I'm a little bit confused and have not had the experience where board members have had to be involved with staff and consultants along the way from the get-go. I mean, I feel like they are preparing information for our perusal as the Board of Directors after it's compiled. So I'm a little bit confused and I just wanted Attorney Bruno's take on that.
Pleasure in terms of what they want to do. Again, my original statement was, this is a working group that is trying to gather information, to put information together. And as being part of one of those working groups, I kind of know how it's formulated and decisions aren't being made, final recommendations are not being made, they're just kind of talking through a process. And I'm not su, you know, this is, I don't believe that they're at the point yet to present anything to the board, based on my involvement, my limited involvement.
Right. I am, okay, I, I do understand that part of it. I think my question was, how much involvement should we have with working groups prior to them presenting the information that they are gathering?
Have a lot of involvement with this working group. I think the working group needs to have an opportunity to gather the data, to gather the information, to be able to come back and present it to the board. Now, I believe that the board was requesting, can we at least know, have a little bit of information in terms of this data gathering? And if I understand correctly, staff was not opposed to recording the November 10th meeting, but this is to the discretion of the board as to how they want to proceed. But board members really should not be involved in that part of the nitty-gritty, if you will. It's when the information comes to the board, then the board can make a decision as to the recommendation.
And, and I think that's what Ms. Jivinelli was asking, not to be involved in the process of it, just to be able to see what the process is and how it is going about so that when it does come before the board, there is a clear understanding of how they got to where they got to. Did I say that?
Well, and we weren't involved in the, in the picking of the committee, just like we weren't with the task force. And so I felt like the outcome was a little difficult at the end of the task force because of the committee was hand-selected. So I think that not being involved in the committee initially to begin with, it makes it sometimes questionable. And that's just where it's at right now. It's just, it's all about transparency. It really is. Thank you.
And I, and I think we clear, that's all cleared up. They have no issues on recording it. Life is good. And I, I think we just move on. And I thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
All for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keats.
Thank you.
Ms. Jordan, thank you, guys.
Ms. Gettins?
Yeah, I have a question before we move on to the next section on Invision 2030.
Is it for Dr. Atkins?
It has to do with operations and that's why I'm asking you at this point. I'm not sure who would answer this question. I had a conversation with Dr. Decimore a few days ago about the additional rooms to be, the classrooms adding, to be added at Lamb's, the new Lamb's. And we've discussed this pre-
I'll wait until they're done. Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Gettins, is this on the agenda that we're speaking on or is that something that's-
This is about operations and capital projects and all that we're talking about. Yes.
Thank you.
I can just give a quick update.
Yeah. My, my question is, in talking to Dr. Decimore, and the scenario is that there is space to build the additional rooms for the additional students. But we were told initially that we couldn't because DOE had said we could not. And Dr. Decimore said that it still can be done through capital funds. And the question should be then, what is our deadline? I am very concerned that if we just keep kicking it down the road, the, you know, we'll run out of the opportunity. And the suggestion was to go ahead and add the additional rooms while the construction team is there, while they have every, all the resources there, because having to come back and do it is going to be an additional cost. And, and Dr. Decimore said it's just a matter of finding out what is our timeline to do that. I know they're still working at the site now, but we don't want to get to a point where they're gone and then we say, okay, well, we'll have to look at it later.
I understand. We're fully aware of that. And as I said, we would be bringing back our recommendation to the board regarding that in the very near future. I know staff is still evaluating what, which direction they want to go there.
And is there a timeline? In other words, when are they looking at being done over there? So that's kind of our point of no return for that.
Right. I understand. We'll get you that response.
Okay. Thank you. And can we expect that, what, in the next week or so or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins.
Okay, so Ms. McClung is going to come up and start our presentation on Invision 2030. And just to provide you all with an update to our strategic plan, I do want to make you where we will have multiple people, you know, coming up and giving presentations because this is certainly a, an effort that goes across all divisions. So there'll be different people coming up and taking turns at, at one of these two podiums, I believe. So what's exciting for, for me personally is that despite all the things that have happened over the course of the last few months, that we have still seen pretty substantial- over the course of the last few months, that we have still seen pretty substantial progress as it relates to Envision 2020 and the Big Five. You saw some of that today in the, in the presentation with the capital project update. For example, the James Stephens, that is a project that goes right to one of our goals, the proximity-based, was the other presentation we just had. That goes to another one of our Big Five goals that is a part of our strategic plan. And then academically, despite the challenges that we have seen, we have been able to make, I think, some pretty substantial progress. Now, we do have, we do have some initial information relative to our progress thus far with the impact of the pandemic, but not, it is not all bad news. I mean, we were concerned, obviously, with the shutdown in March and with the transition to distance learning, that we would have a significant impact. And you'll see there are impacts, but I think the team is working diligently to minimize and mitigate those impacts. And then there's some good news to report academically as well. So, Ms. McClung has the presentation ready, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins, and good afternoon, everyone. Nice to be here. When Dr. Atkins brought us Vision 2020 five years ago, we would have had no way to imagine what 2020 was going to look like. It has just been an amazing year. But luckily, we did have a strong strategic plan to keep us focused, and that plan has kept us really focused on our purpose of our vision, to make sure that we become a world-class school system, and our mission of ensuring that every student achieves his or her highest potential. Last year, we rolled out core values, not realizing just how important those would become this year. When we look at those, talk about excellence, committed to continuously improving the learning and working environment. Just stop and think for a minute of all of the changes that have taken place to our working and learning environment over the past three or four months, making sure that everyone has what they need to maintain health and safety, and to be able to work and learn in that environment. When we talk about integrity, think back to the past summer, when we were sharing with our community on basically a daily basis, all the changes that were coming forward, and how we were going to make sure that our students were able to learn. And the high expectations, challenging goals, let's talk about, let's see if we can change to virtual learning in two weeks. Or, you know what, we have a little less than two months, and we're going to make sure that every family has at least three options, so that they can pick the learning module that's best for their child. Accountability, you're going to hear about it today. So, you're going to see our strategic plan, see where we stand with that, and what are our targets for the upcoming year. And while believing in students and individualized instruction, we have become so individualized over the past few months, trying very hard to meet the needs of each child, and making sure that they have what they need in order to meet not just their academic needs, but also their social-emotional needs. And professionals, while this district has come such a long way since March, the passion of our teachers to be able to get through this, the passion of our team here at the district to provide the resources and the support that's needed for those teachers, it's just been amazing to observe. Through all of that, our focus has been student success. And you see here, you know, how we define that, and what it takes to make it happen. We've had an amazing amount of community engagement. Our workforce has been challenged like never before, but we're making it happen, and we are continuously improving that. Throughout this, we've had five long-term objectives, and you're going to hear about each one of those today. And out of those five long-term objectives came five Big Five goals that the superintendent has focused on. Dr. Atkins, do you want to address those?
Well, just again, the reason why we wanted to focus on this, I think you've seen some tremendous progress over the last five years academically, with some of the things that you've seen in terms of proficiency gain, achievement gaps, graduation rate, and the elimination of DA schools. But there are still some things that, more than a year ago, I felt we needed to have some additional focus, because I didn't see the progress that I really wanted to see in some of these areas. And particularly as it relates to, you know, some of the things like our pre-K involvement, for example. I think that's, that's a really game changer for our community, I think extremely important. But I really recognize, as did our staff, that the school district is going to have to really take the lead here, extend a hand to our partners, to make sure that Lee County and students that, before they enter kindergarten, have a quality experience. So, we've put a very aggressive goal in place for 2030, and we intend to make progress, substantial progress toward that every year. Same with workforce, I think, you know, every time you go to a Horizon Council, or a foundation meeting, or anywhere out in the community, you know, with our chambers, they talk about the preparedness of the workforce. So, you know, I think that we've got some people, I see Mr. Everly here in our audience, people that are really dedicated to doing this, and so, expanding our technical colleges, I think is something that's critically important. We really haven't had an initiative in that way, as far as the school district is concerned. So, expanding Fort Myers Technical College, looking in the east, and also expanding the opportunities in Cape Coral. Cape Coral is our biggest, biggest city, but the technical center out there is relatively small. So, I think that we, we can really exploit a real opportunity. Just to name a couple, a couple of things that we've really focused on as a part of the Big Five.
Thank you. So, we have some key strategic initiatives that started five years ago, and are continuing, and you may recall that we had them kind of in chunks. So, from 2021 through 2025, here are those key strategic initiatives, and they're really going to take a lot of work this year. That focus on meeting the needs of the whole student, we know that there have been a lot of challenges for our students, being home, and not being with their friends, and not being in school. Being able to focus on instructional alignment is going to be so important this year with the different models, making sure that, that every student is getting an equitable learning experience. Fostering on that culture of high performance, we've talked about that, making sure that everybody has what they need, focusing on that physical and emotional safety. The technological innovations that have come out this year have just been amazing and incredible, going virtual in basically two weeks' time, and providing students with what they needed, and teachers with what they needed to make that happen. The business community and partnerships have just been terrific. When we went virtual and needed people to step up to help with making sure our students had what they needed and they were fed, people were literally ringing the phone off the hook, saying, what can I do to help? And realigning our divisional structure and resources, we have come together as a district like never before. When you hear Mr. Davis talk about how we want to get rid of those silos, we've done more work toward that in the past three months than we've done in the past 30 years. And then continuing deployment of systemic improvement has been really important, because we need to make sure that we are all doing things in a very systemic and systematic fashion. So, these initiatives are going to be really important as we move forward. Today, you're going to hear about the goals that we've set for Envision 2030. You're going to get a real high-level view, and we'll start off with increasing academic success, and it looks like we have Dr. Quisenberry to start us off.
Thank you, good afternoon. So, for our first quarter action steps, we're obviously unique to any other first quarter. They started with creating a Lee Home Connect Task Force. So, before the school year began, we had over 50 teachers and district staff members from various departments that worked together to create our instructional continuity plan for Lee Home Connect and that instructional model. Our content teams continue to have weekly Zoom office hours, and so, any teacher that has any questions or needs any support can come onto those office hours at any time to get that support, or to ask for an additional meeting with any of our curriculum members. We purchased NearPod, which is an interactive program for students and for teachers. It's an instructional program that the teachers are able to use with both Lee Home Connect and with face-to-face, that uses quick formative assessments and collaboration with the students to help to guide the teacher's instruction, and it is especially helpful in our hybrid classrooms. And we continue to have professional development and push out resources for NearPod. We have continued our leading in learning. So, we have close to 1,000 teachers that are leading and learning representatives for our schools and their grade levels and content. We had our first training in July, and then they take the, all of the resources and all of the knowledge back to their teams. We had an additional training in September, and then they will come back again, hopefully not virtually, but it's been virtually up to this point, in December, to continue to work on the rigor and the standards-based and best practices for not just our instructional, not our instructional models, but in instruction in general for intervention. We have provided over 300 professional development opportunities since the beginning of the school year. A little over 3,000 of our teachers have attended either an adopted curriculum resource training, or training for iReady, or just basic, looking for basic content knowledge and best practices. We also have monthly assistant principal meetings that are curriculum-based, as well as ongoing principal meetings for best practices and focusing on instruction. So, our first goal is to increase the district grade to an A, and we did not change any of our targets. We are still on track to be an A district. Although we focus on safety and security, we also continue to push towards reaching our student academic achievements. So, Goal Two is to increase our ELA proficiency to be the highest of Florida's 10 large districts. So, the data that you see is for the last three years. The main difference is for 1819 and for 1920, it was data from quarter one. So, those two school years, we did not have a baseline. We instead took the assessment after the students were in school for nine weeks, so it was quarter one. As well as for elementary and middle, it was STAR. We had a sprinkle of elementary, I mean, I mean, iReady schools, but the majority of the schools were STAR at that time. For 2021, it was a baseline, and so, the students took it two weeks into the school year, so much earlier, as well as all middle school and all but five of our elementary schools are now utilizing iReady. The big difference in that is STAR is a sliding scale. So, when the students took their baseline mid-year and spring, it was a sliding scale where the students increased, fall, winter, spring. With iReady, it is only spring. So, the data represents where students need to be, or where they are, according to where they should be at the very end of the school year. So, that data would represent for elementary and middle, our students that are where they already need to be at the end of the school year. The same rules apply for math, elementary and middle, same process, we are utilizing iReady now, and then for algebra and geometry, it is the STAR assessment.
So, when we look at Goal Four, increasing our overall academic rate in the top 10, we don't have data on that, because of the fact we didn't have state assessments last year, that's going to be incomplete data. And we will continue a report on this goal, though, at the end of the year, if we have all of our state assessments and state accountability. Goal Five is around our subgroup data and closing the achievement gaps. So, this is one of the pieces, when we looked at our baseline data this year, we were very excited to still note, with everything that went on in quarter four and the start of this school year, we continue to close the achievement gap between each of our subgroups. So, what you're seeing on the screen there is that three-year trend overall, and how that data is still continuing to close. And on the next goal, when we look at for mathematics, here, one of the big pieces that really stuck out to us is our ELL population, and that's that very last set of bar graphs that we have here. We stayed stagnant the last two years. However, looking at our baseline data for this year, and where our students, English-language learners, and our non-English language learners, we are closing those gaps. So, these two goals, we are excited to see, based upon everything else we have going on, that we are continuing to close those gaps. So, as we move forward, what are we doing with the data that we just recently got in? As a curriculum team, we are beginning to tier our schools based upon their content needs. So, not looking over on broad overall, but based upon ELA, mathematics, science, social studies, and how can we push into those schools? And by push-in, I mean virtually. So, we are continuing to meet with our schools via Zoom, joining their Lee Home Connect classrooms, our Hy-Vig classrooms, but now strategically starting to meet with their PLCs in areas that they see and would like additional support. We are also continuing, continuing those professional development pieces that Dr. Quisenberry mentioned, as well as we just had our first meeting with principal leads, where we had a very robust conversation around academics and being able to support our schools, and then looking forward to quarter two, how we plan on discussing data and a modification to that. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Chuck Bradley.
Thank you. So, Objective One, Goal Seven, was to increase percentage of students who perceive there is an adult in their school who cares about them. And we used a PBIS-based survey with our elementary and our secondary students to get some information about that, to set our baseline this year. The actual return that we had of 1,700 elementary students, 92.4% perceived that there was an adult in their, in their school that cared about them. Of the 1,200 secondary students that we surveyed, 86.1% saw that there was an adult in their school that cared about them, for an overall set of 89%. This year, we are going to re-survey our students. Unfortunately, because of the change in the instructional models, statistically, we can't really bridge last year's results to this year, although we will use that historical data as we go forward. But our anticipation is that with our given instructional models, we will re-survey and utilize that survey to also find out how students are perceiving adult support in all of those instructional models. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Erin.
Definitely a tag team, huh?
Hello, I'm going to talk a little bit about the summer programs that we were able to offer this year. I think that you will be very pleasantly surprised. I'm just going to give an overview at this time, we're definitely going to delve much deeper into this in November. So, I'm going to go through each one and give you a little bit more information about it. For ESY, students are invited based on their IEP. We are required to offer it, and we did. Parents are not required to send their child, and it was conducted virtually this year. With VPK, we were able to serve 180 students virtually, and then, when things changed a little bit, 15 face-to-face. For credit recovery, we did this virtually six through 12. Teachers monitored students and also pushed in virtually to assist them. ELL and ESC students were offered support. This total does include Lee Virtual School, but we'll get into more of how we were able to also offer enrichment in November. For the Expanded Learning Program, all students in K through eight were invited to participate. This was all done through iReady. Teachers monitored student progress, funding came from several different sources that we were able to utilize to offer this, and this was new. ESC and ELL support was offered. For High School Intervention, we, we had several different funding sources. This came from Title I Part D, and this offered additional opportunities for credit recovery. We then had the GEAR grant that allowed us to do face-to-face, which was very nice towards the end of the summer. We offered that to Level One students in grades three through five. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, some of our things could not be offered. We did not offer the SOS program due to the need for that to be face-to-face and COVID factors. Third-Grade Rating Camp was not offered because of no testing, and then we'd also, because of not participating in summer testing, we did not offer Algebra I. We usually have ELL camps, but we did not do that this year. Instead, we pushed in our support to the other programs that we offered. Additionally, we did have vocational rehabilitation, and we served 365 students through this program, and these numbers are not included in the chart, but we have been able to, comparative numbers are not there, because we have not been able to confirm for 2019.
You have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so, I guess what I would like to know when looking at a chart like this is, how many kids were eligible and offered? how many kids were eligible and offered? How many actually participated? What was the difference in outcome for the kids who participated versus the kids who did not? Um, you know, I, I, I know we're offering these programs. The, the question is, what's the impact? This is a significant investment. Um, so it's great to have the numbers served, but I need, I need a lot more information than this.
Absolutely, and this is just a overview at this point. And in November, we're going to delve much deeper into the data that revolves only around this program. And I, uh, can tell you actually right now, we are diligently working on, uh, that comparative data and, and getting the numbers of kids and comparing the scores of kids that attended versus those that did not. With credit recovery, our target truly is to, uh, make sure that we're giving students the opportunity to graduate and then to move on to the next grade level should it be needed. And we can, um, give, we will give you data showing how many attended versus how many students actually earned that credit. So I think when we dive in in November, you'll see a lot more of that.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so, okay, now I understand. That's right. We learned that there would be those other meetings. So, I guess, and, and I'm, I don't, I don't want to be rude, but I don't understand why we're getting this. I mean, essentially, um, you know, we're spending time sitting here, learning about what was done, but this could have been a white paper. And, and I'm not looking at you specifically. I'm really looking at the superintendent. And I don't, not sure if I'm being clear about the question I'm, or the statement I'm making. Maybe other board members can, can weigh in, but...
Ms. Kittens?
Um, thank you, Ms. Morgan. I mean, I, and again, not being rude as well. I, I agree. One of my main things was, and I mentioned it in a meeting the other day, about the, uh, GEAR and the CARES grants and asking those questions. And basically, it's, is it working? You know, has it worked? So I guess my question too is, are we following these students? Especially, I mean, just looking at the opportunity here, the GEAR grant students, a hundred and thirty-nine of them is, you know, a small group that could be that test group that, if it weren't for Co- COVID, that may not have been able to, you know, to happen. Um, I look at the line that's expanded learning and, a- a- and again, I don't, I'm not sure what that is. I'm thinking it's when you have the after-school and before-school training and that, the extra thirty minutes and all that. Is that the, uh, in expanded?
No, ma'am. This would actually be from the summer program that we offered, and that was really to really open up after quarter four with, uh, what happened and our quick need to change what we were doing to really offer for as many students as we could the opportunity at their individualized level to keep learning over the summer. So it really was a program brought on by the pandemic to really help meet
With the pandemic.
the biggest number of students that we could possibly meet in keeping them learning and keeping them on track this summer.
And, and I will, I'm going to jump in with...
Can I respond to an earlier?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I believe this information is, and very important to get in front of the board and the public. Um, I understand your desire for a white paper, but I'll be blunt. Not everybody reads white papers. You do, not everybody else does. And I think that, that to be able to bring this forward, not only to this board, but also to this community, this, this is important information that the community have. One thing the board wanted from us is, how are we going to know how effective things were from the spring? And where are we, where are we going to be in the fall? This is part of that information, where they, they have done the progress monitoring. You just received information on ELA math and ELA, uh, ELA and math. So you see where we are, were in terms of our data. That's important information for you to know. I think one of the things that everybody wants to know, our public wants to know, is, is how much slip was there? And so at least you have some preliminary data points there. In terms of where we are, in terms of the Big Five and the strategic plan, I think it's important that despite COVID and everything that's been going on, that this staff and this school district and their teachers and the kids are still making progress toward those goals despite the obstacles that they have. So, you know, we will definitely do a deep dive into this. You know, here, here's a piece of information I think is important for everybody to have. A lot of things we couldn't do in person because of the lockdown situation we're in. So district staff scrambled, made some tough decisions. Like, I remember making the SOS decision. That was a very, that was a, you know, something that's near and dear to a lot of our hearts, but we decided we can't meet that, that program's needs really effectively, but how else can we try to, to reach our learners? I think, you know, we're all learning in this. I always say we're back to being first-year teachers. Um, but in terms of being able to learn in the distance format, here's what we did. And then we'll be coming back to you a little bit later on with, here are the specific results as we do that deeper dive. I, I just think, you know, for, for me personally, I do, I understand that, you know, we want to maybe read this and stuff, but I also think it's important to talk about it so we can have a discussion and to present the information here in a, in a public setting. Just my take. I'm sorry for the plat-, for the getting on my soapbox, but I just, I thought this was something that you would want to hear, and I was excited about presenting it and because I'm, I think it's just important that you know where we are as it relates to our plan.
Ms. Kittens?
And, and I agree with that, and yes, we do. And I think every bit of information is, is helpful in this process. Um, and I think everybody understands we're all in this boat, kind of changing roars from time to time and trying to figure which way to go. So it is a, a challenge for everyone, and, and I appreciate all, especially the summer programs that were completed. Um, I really, and as I mentioned very often, have a very, uh, big concern about this achievement gap when we are actually able to measure what the drop was. And I know we're doing things along the way, and I, I personally don't think we'll really know the outcome of this until next year. And, um, it's, it's just a very, very big challenge. My question to you on this list, and I see it as an overview of what you're doing and not delving into it deeply yet, and we will get that in the future, and thank you. On the Gears grant, though, um, I think I had heard that it was like two million dollars or something if we were able to do that program. And so that, that was the one that always jumps out to me because we had a hundred and thirty-nine students in it so that we could qualify to get that grant. And where are we with that grant now and the rest of that money? Are we, uh, you know, following up with these students with it? I'm not sure. We took the opportunity to do the program so we could get the, the grant. Now what do we, where do we look for what's following up with that?
Can you speak to that?
On the, um, it, on the next slide, we're, we're going to give you a little bit of where we are going. So we will happily, um, do that for you and, and give you that information.
Okay.
But just to answer a little bit more of your question, I guess when, um, I looked at this once we were putting it together and I saw the amount of students that we were actually able to serve this summer, it, it was amazing to me that in the situation that we were in, when it would have been super easy to let summer go, like lots of the Big Ten districts did, they canceled everything, that Lee County took this in weeks and created something that impacted positively, even if it just kept them engaged, so many kids. So the number's meant a lot to me in that regard. Dr. Q, did you want to talk about the GEAR grant?
I just wanted to refer to the GEAR grant. So the GEAR grant is, is still ongoing. There, um, the second part of it was that we offer after-school and Saturday school tutoring and intervention for our lowest three hundred schools. So we have six elementary schools that fall on the L three hundred for the state list, and they are currently offering after-school tutoring two days a week to all of their Level Ones and Twos and Third, Fourth, and Fifth. And then there is one school that is also holding Saturday sessions. And that goes until October thirty-first because that's when that grant runs out.
Is there a possibility to at least see which schools and what programs they have? I, I'm sure you have.
Yep.
I just to share that with us.
We can send that.
And I just want to say finally, thank you. I, I, I see your, your empathy and your, you know, desire to make this all work. And, and please don't think we're not saying that it's not.
No.
We appreciate you and all that you're doing.
And just to clarify what Erin is saying, um, in middle school, I can tell you that our team scrambled to put those learning paths together over the summer and in fourth quarter. And we typically see a drop in our baseline data.
Right.
And at middle school, we actually saw an increase. And remember, that data point is where they would be at the end of the year. So our sixth graders were testing like seventh graders. Our seventh graders were testing like eighth graders, and we saw an increase in their performance. So that's huge.
Thank you. Ms. Jevonelli, please.
Yeah, so I actually am in agreement with Dr. Atkins because for me, um, we didn't meet our benchmarks in twenty, for twenty twenty vision, twenty twenty. So that was before, and there was no COVID obstacle. So I think everything, we know the staff is working very hard to, um, address this. So I think it's, uh, being very proactive instead of reactive. And so I commend y'all because we've got a lot of work to do. So, thank you.
And Ms., um, Morgan, you had one more question?
Yeah, I just have one more comment. I mean, I understand what the superintendent is saying. I guess, from my point of view as a board member, extraordinary things happened over the summer and great work was done. And that's what we should be talking about, not about the strategic plan. I mean, to me, the, the results of what you've accomplished will be in the, uh, modules that you present over the, over the coming year. I keep looking at you, and I shouldn't be looking at you because this is not about you.
That's okay.
So I guess what I'm saying to the superintendent is, what I'm hearing you say from all of this is, you're trying to show what you did to respond to the situation we were in. And I think that would have been, frankly, a clean, well, for me, for me, a less, it would have been more informative and less, um, whatever. I just wanted to say that because I do know that this represents an extraordinary effort on behalf of staff. And I don't want anybody to think that I am for a moment, you know, denigrating what has taken place. I'm just saying the context in which the information is being presented is, I think, makes it confusing.
And I just want to say one thing, and as, as far as the expanding learning, at least twenty of those are my grandkids and my nieces and nephews, so thank you for that. Just had to put that out there.
Program for your...
They, they had a program. I was watching it. It was there.
I'm going to respond to what Ms. Morgan said. I, I, I see a very specific reason for this in the summer because every single school year, even normal years, there's that, sometimes a whole month of, of time when you have to reteach. And given the situation of the fourth quarter, um, it might have been half a year or a whole year that, that, that was lost. And at least for X number of kids in, in these programs, um, you know, even if you don't have, and, and I'm really old school, back before we had the computers and could do all the data that's done now, um, a, a teacher can s-, a, a seasoned teacher can see and, and know and judge his or her class when, when they come in and, and even without looking at data, which I understand is important. Like, I'm going to have to reteach this. I'm going to have to reteach that. So I think probably it raised the kids up enough that they weren't totally down at the bottom of the pool and, and no way to swim back up to the top. So that just is a, from a teaching point of view, I, I think that's the importance of a summer program, especially this summer after that fourth quarter.
And I just want to add one more thing too, because you said SOS didn't happen. I thought it was virtual, that some of the kids were able to do that in a virtual manner.
We were looking at some, you know, potential options there, but really felt that the value of the SOS program was the, the face-to-face, the internships, that type of thing. So at the end of the day, it was a difficult decision, but we, we decided not to go forward with it this year.
Okay. That's why we couldn't find the link. Okay. That answers. Okay. Thank you.
I could just, um, address Mrs. Morgan's comment for just a moment. When we look at the strategic plan, all of our work is driven by the plan. We are required by policy to give you an update at the end of the year, looking at the results, which we've done. So if you go back to some, a slide here, our expanded learning Big Five goal is expanding learning opportunities for students. We were really worried we weren't going to be able to reach that goal of five hundred students by July thirty-first, twenty twenty. And then, you know, COVID happened. So we were really worried about it at that point. And I'm not saying we wouldn't have done this anyway because we would have, because that's the team that we have, but it was directly in alignment with this Big Five goal of how do we reach those kids and give them opportunities when we don't have school? And we served over ten thousand more kids this summer than we did the summer before. I think that's amazing.
It is amazing.
And I think that that's partially because we're so focused on the strategic plan. So I, I know that it might have been simpler to just come in and say, here's what we did this summer, but that wouldn't give you the, the whole picture because everything we did this summer was a direct result of having our focus on our strategic plan. All right, and with that, I'll let Lauren finally get her slide in here.
As it relates to reinstating the programs, um, for this coming summer, we certainly will have to wait to see, um, a little bit of what happens with legislation, um, for things that are required. Um, other than that, I can tell you after this last summer and the realization of, uh, what a pandemic can do if you want to look at it in a positive way, which makes, uh, lots of things that always were no turn to yes. Um, we look forward to hopefully being able to move forward with continuing the much more increased impact that we've had. And I'll turn it over to Mrs. Stillwell.
Thank you. Thanks, Erin. Um, so in addition to what Erin spoke about as we move forward with the action steps for, um, for this goal, um, we are expanding the Twenty-First Century Grant. Um, that's a continued grant, and it provides after-school tutoring for students at Fort Myers Middle Academy and Manatee Elementary. But the new grant is for five years, and it's going to provide an additional school counselor to concentrate on social, emotional learning for students at Tice Elementary, Lehigh Elementary, Edgewood, and Franklin Park. And the grant is also going to provide after-school tutoring for these students. So that goes back to our expanded learning day and, um, and year with our after-school and summer programs. Um, not only do we want to be limited, uh, we don't want to be limited to opportunities just in academics, so we are also looking at expanding enrichment goals. Um, and we started conversations with the Boys and Girls Club to participate with, um, with them, to partner up with them. And last year, as you all know, we began talking with the YMCA, and we had some grand plans for the summer and offering summer programs at our schools. But due to COVID nineteen, unfortunately, we needed to pull some of that back. Uh, luckily, we were able, while we did scale back, we were able to offer a summer program at Cypress Lake Middle School through the YMCA. Did that for about five weeks, and they served about twenty-five to thirty students a week. So we looked at that as really positive because it was a way for us to kind of test things out, and it went really, really well. So in the future, we are, um, looking at, uh, expanding that back to where we were going to have it, maybe even a little larger last summer for this upcoming summer. So we'll keep you posted as we move forward with those organizations. And finally, another program, um, is Kids Read Now. This is a national program that we were hoping to offer last summer. We talked a little bit about it with you then, but COVID interfered with those plans, so we're back on track for the summer. Um, this program has students, with the help of their teachers, select nine books that they want to read. The books are provided in English and Spanish. And the schools, um, host a reading night. We're going to figure out how exactly we're going to do that in the spring, um, for all of the parents and the students. Families attend that, and they receive the first three of the nine books that the students choose. And then at that point, summer, uh, parents provide summer contact information, and they agree to help with summer reading. And then over the summer, the students read a book and talk about it with their parents or their guardians. And the cool thing about this program is that inside the front of each book, there's literally like talking points and discussion questions and leading things so that the parents actually have a guide as to what to ask their students and what to ask their children. And it's all on grade level. Um, and then when they finish the book, uh, the parent can email, text, or call a contact number, and then another book is sent to the students through the mail. So it's kind of a cool thing because the kids get the mail, but then they're reading as they go, and it's tracking their progress. We're going to offer this to approximately thirty-five hundred students in our second-grade classes at our Tier Three school. at our tier-three schools, and we're going to use Title I dollars to fund the program. So all of this, between what Erin spoke about and what I just spoke about, is really collaborative work between academic services, grants, community engagement, and executive services. And we're taking what we had hoped to accomplish last summer, digging more into that data that you specifically asked about, and then looking forward to what we're going to do this summer in order for us to come up with our new target, which we'll bring you soon. We don't have that yet because we wanted to really dig into the data to see what a good target would be moving forward.
Thank you, Lauren.
And I'm turning it over to Dr. Burr. Yes, that was our objective one. So if there are any additional questions about objective one, before we move on to objective two, which is increasing kindergarten readiness.
Miss Gittens has a question. I had a question. Sorry, Ms. Fisher, out of sight, out of mind, I apologize.
Oh, you're fine.
I'm going to call in and try to reach next because I have a terrible echo. But I just want to say that having history in this district and knowing the impact, not only of the COVID, but the growth and the difference in our populations now, I am in awe of what the staff has accomplished. And I want to say thank you to each and every one of you, because you have helped so many children who would have been floundering a lot more otherwise. So thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
My question was about the Kids Read Program. You said you're going to use Title I funding for that. Will that be at the individual schools' Title I budgets, that they will be paying for that? Or is it a district?
Jeff Spiro coached me, district.
I'm sorry.
District.
It'll be district, and they won't have to take that out of their budget. Thank you.
Dr. Burr with kindergarten readiness.
Okay, good afternoon. So our first goal, Tiffany Franklin has been with the Head Start Program for a number of years, and so she's here with me because some of this she was personally involved in. So we're going to tag-team this a little bit. Goal one was to increase the percentage of pre-K students identified as prepared for kindergarten. This is a little bit of lagging data, so our target for FY '20 was 45. We actually hit 41. As you may remember, this is, data comes from the first 30 days of kindergarten. So this, last year's pre-K students or this year's first grade, this year's kindergarten students have already taken the test. It's the early star. And that data doesn't come out from the state, though, until January or February. So our target is 50%, but we won't really know what that is until January or February. Some things to consider about that is that the state has changed who, which kindergarten students take that test. So we're not sure exactly what that's going to look like. If retainees no longer take it, so if it's a retained kindergartner, they don't take it. If they're monolinguals, they don't take it this year. And if they did not pass the practice test, in previous years, they were kind of pushed in to take the test anyway because sometimes the practice is a little difficult. They were no longer to do that. So there will be less, and for this year, because our virtual, our home connect kids did not have to come in to take it. Parents were given the option to come in and take it, but they were not forced to come into school in those 30 days to take it. So we'll have less numbers. We're not sure what that's going to, how that's going to affect that target goal for us. But we'll be looking for that in January or February. Okay?
And I'm sorry, I'm going to have to look this way. So I am just going to look up here. But goal two was to increase the percentage of student growth on the VPK assessment, which is stands for voluntary pre-kindergarten. So that's the state assessment for four-year-olds. The data that you see at the FY '20 actual was given in January. And then the end-of-year assessment is usually given the last 30 days of school. Since we were not in school, we were not able to administer that assessment for the third time. So the data you see there is mid-year data. Okay?
I'm sorry, you said the data there is what?
Mid-year. It was given in January. So it's given three times a year. That's the first 30 days of school, mid-year, which is in January, and then the last 30 days of school. So the pre and the mid are more formative in nature because it informs the instructions so that as teachers get to the end of the year, we hope that that third quarter or fourth quarter data shows that they've met all of the kindergarten readiness skills. So we wouldn't expect at this time that they were a really high percentage because they are end-of-year goals.
We have a question.
I just want to make sure I'm clear. I'm sorry. Call Ms. Morgan?
Oh, I didn't hear.
So you said that the actual 20 is the third quarter of 20 and not the, so it doesn't compare to the target of 20. How did it, how did third quarter 20 compare to third quarter 19?
I would have to look at, to give you the exact, but I can tell you, it's probably almost very similar.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Which is why I say, because they're end-of-year goals. With the math and the oral language, those always come first, especially the oral language because kids have to be able to speak and be understood in order for any of those other things to happen. And so those numbers are always much bigger in the beginning than the math or phonological awareness. And then math is a little easier to teach all day long, so that comes just a little bit quicker than the phonological awareness piece.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Okay, question number one is, what age are these?
They are four.
Four years old, oh my gosh.
(laughing).
Okay, and I can see the question, the way this is put up there. Actually, that center column is what kind of just throws it off. You know, if you just put NA or even something like that for the percentages under FY '20 actual, because where I was confused at first, for example, you look at the 81% target in phonological awareness and 20, and you're only increasing that by four. But with the one in the middle, it makes it look like, wow, where are we here? So just even, I mean, we understand that it was not viable data, really, to compare to anything else. So not having a number in there would help us to see, you're going from 81 to 85, and 82 to 84, and 81 to 84. And it's a little more understandable. Just my thought, but thank you so much.
That was mine, thank you too. Ms. Gittens?
Goal three was to increase participation in the Community Pre-K Articulation Program to one-third of the elementary schools. So this program is to get community pre-K providers involved in improving the pre-K program and making it a very high quality. Our target goal, FY '20, was to have eight schools participating in that. We actually had the four in FY '20 actual is the number of schools that actually had two or more articulation meetings with the organizations around their school, the daycare providers around their school. But we actually had 13 schools on board that did not get a chance to do their both articulation meetings, so we didn't include them in that data. But we believe we're well on the way to making that FY '21 target of 16, because we already have 13 committed to do that. Those meetings, we have our first meeting for this school year on Thursday, two days from now. And so we're anxiously looking forward to resuming everything that was in place before the shutdown, and we were no longer able to do those community forums and those kinds of things with the daycare partners.
How do you, how do you go about increasing participation? Do you literally go out to the different daycares that offer pre-K?
Well, they were invited, what our intent, our program was for, first, we're getting the schools involved, the schools that were willing to make those connections with the daycare providers, the pre-K providers in their neighborhood schools, around their school, and get them to make those initial connections with those organizations. Like one school was going to host a pre-K graduation for one of their partner organizations to get them involved in the school. And others were having events at their school for the daycare partners, the community partners, just to get them all interested. And that forum that was to take place, I believe it was in March or April of last year, was inviting the community daycare providers into our building and to really help inform them and guide them in creating, developing really strong programs, getting them on board. So it's a combination of getting the schools and the principals on board first to make those contacts, personal contacts around their school, and then also doing the push to bring as many providers in as we can otherwise.
Okay, and the reason I was asking that, because I know just for instance, the Villas, they have one particular daycare that a lot, and my grandkids, of course, went there. They have gone to the pre-K before and then went to the school and then came back for after-school. So I mean, they had that relationship with.
Right.
The school. But I don't think they're on our preferred providers, that particular one. That's why I was asking, because.
I'd have to check for the specifics of whether that one's on there, but I believe that was the one that was going to have the graduation ceremony, the promotion ceremony for the pre-K on the Villas campus at the end of the year. But then, of course, that was not able to happen.
All right. That's just interesting.
And the preferred pre-K provider program, there are certain criteria that they would need to meet in order to be a part of that program. We would hate to kind of put our name out there and say, hey, you know, these are quality programs if we don't have a very.
Of course.
Strict set of guidelines that they're going to have to look like and sound like and act like in order for us to, you know, bring them here in front of you guys even and say, hey, you know, this is a quality program. But they do have to do those guidelines. Some of them cost people a little more money and things like that, so sometimes providers, it's harder to get them in to participate in that. And so that is something that we're working on, even if that's grant money or whatever that might be to ease that burden for them to get more participants.
And I was just asking because to me, you know, that definitely would meet one of the goals for the kids to be ready when they come in, the more that we have.
Correct. Because we don't service all the kids incoming kindergartners, they're serviced by other areas. And so if we can get them up to speed, then we're increasing the number of kindergartners that are ready.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, isn't there, the daycare centers that offer the pre-K, isn't there a list published by the state?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, there are.
So wouldn't they automatically, if they are state-approved and they have the proper teacher ratios and the certified pre-K teachers, wouldn't that automatically be a preferred?
That's not, those things are not part of the state requirements. Those are just things that we, as a district, have decided.
So what you're saying, Tiffany, if I'm correct, is that the items that would make them preferred providers for our district would not necessarily, would be over and above what the state requires for their minimum.
Yeah. Because really, you just have to sign with the state that says, I want to do this program here, and they pay money for those people to participate in that program. For the district is a funding source. And there are criteria that we have to abide by, but none of it determines whether or not we are a quality program.
Okay.
So they don't, they don't talk about ratios and stuff like that.
Quite a few years when my grandchildren were in, they were in a daycare center that had that program. And I remember specifically that it was a half-day program each day, and that once they were like four years old and in that program, they, my daughter paid a reduced amount.
Yes, yes.
Because the state was funding.
The state pays.
So what you're telling me is that just because the state has approved and they have the teacher ratios and the curriculum and all the things that go.
Minimum standards.
To pre-k, what additional does the district want? That's what I'm not understanding.
So some of it is, you know, I don't have them all here in front of me, so I don't, I don't know all of them. But some of it, some of them are, I want to say certified, but it's not certified. They're licensed by the state. And so if the state, if DCF goes in and they find any issues with the program or they get violations, they're, you know, quoted violations 1, 2, 3, 4. So we've determined if they get, you know, a whole bunch of violations, they're probably not a quality program. But that would not necessarily prohibit them from participating in the VPK program. Does that make sense?
Not totally. Just because the, okay, and no, I totally understand, because unless it's a high-quality program, you're not going to get the benefit that we want.
And we would be happy to provide you some further documentation about the difference between the two.
It just doesn't make sense because if this, if they're the certified teachers and the state is paying, so.
I think what we're trying to do is say there's a little bit more that would help to make them more of a high quality than just the state pays for, has approved them to receive VPK funding. But again, we could very, very easily get you a comparison of the two.
Yeah.
And let you see what that difference is. We just can't provide that right now off the top of our heads.
Because it may well be that there's certain providers that are not getting the benefit of this, or certain providers that.
And I will speak as a grandparent too, for a moment.
Have community, let's just say it frankly, have community connections.
Yeah.
So that they somehow.
Right.
Get a benefit. And I would hate to see that because it seems to me that there are quite a few quality daycare centers. I know the one my grandchildren went to, very high quality.
Right. My grandkids went to two different VPK programs, and there was a marked difference, even though they were both licensed VPK providers. There was a marked difference in the instruction and the program that was offered in both of those different spots. So there is a difference.
Just thinking if it's state-funded and they have to, that they have to measure up to certain state things. Yeah, I'd be.
Okay, we'll be happy to put that together for you.
Seeing that, and seeing which ones have gained that.
Perfect.
Because we, as a district, we're spending money and time to lift up.
Right.
Some of these commercial establishments, which of course benefits us.
Right.
But I just want to be sure that it's done in an equitable way so that.
Exactly.
Some of the other places out there that may not have the community connections that some of the people that we work with have.
Right. So we'll be, we'll be, we'll work on that, and we'll get it to you expeditiously.
Thank you.
That's my new word today, expeditiously. I saw it somewhere else.
Ms. Gittens has a question, please.
Okay, on this, yes, it's still up there. Tell me if I'm correct in making this assumption. This goal to increase participation in, with the 16 schools, which is one-third of our elementary schools, is the goal for 21. But in actuality, your goal for 20 was eight.
Yes.
And without COVID, you would have reached or exceeded.
We would have exceeded it.
So at this point, you're still leaving the same goal of 16. Since you know there's that potential to exceed that, had you thought about.
We did.
Adding more elementary schools?
We did. There's been a principal change at a number of the schools that were originally bought, had bought into it last year. And so it's going to take a little bit of time to get them on board and fully up to speed on what the program is and what their expectations would be to be a part of it. And so to get those on board, I think there were four or five, if I'm not mistaken, plus an additional three, we figured was a pretty good challenge in these times right now.
Okay, excellent. But you will have the ones that were in there before.
Oh, yes, we're going to get them there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Tiffany, that's you.
Okay, so this is goal four, reducing the percentage of chronically absent pre-K students from 32 to 25%. We felt comfortable going into FY '21, reducing that target even more because our target was 25%. And even with COVID, we were just 1% off of meeting that goal and reducing the chronically absent student.
Ms. Gittens, so my question is, why did you go down and, am I not reading this right? Your goal was, okay, so in other words, there were 25% chronically absent. Your goal was, okay, so in other words, there were 25% chronically absent.
We were trying to get to a target of FY20 of 25, but because fourth quarter was virtual, we didn't get, we were at 26, which we thought was a big win to get our pre-K students to sign into a virtual pre-K program and only have 26% chronically absent, so we just missed that target by 1%.
Thank you.
And we consider this our big win, and Tiffany was instrumental in writing this grant and receiving it, so I'm gonna ask her to share with you this, what we consider a significant win.
So part of the district's goal is to raise money for pre-K expansion projects. We were successful in working with the Office of Head Start to really raise almost 1.2 million to help with that expansion. Part of that is, there's gonna be two pre-K centers out east, because that seems to be where our heaviest waitlist is for those kids, so part of that is a playground, classroom supplies, and then just that planning aspect of the whole building. This year, we were confident in raising our goal a little bit and probably almost doubling that, one for the simple fact of, we're only in the planning stages with this 1.2 million, and we should be able to secure the rest of the funds to actually erect that, those two buildings.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so my question is, is this one-time funding?
Yes, this one was a one-time
Lasts for how many?
It lasts for how long?
Oh, for two years.
For two years, okay, so you gear up to do that?
Yes.
Then what happens when the funding goes away?
When the funding goes away, then it's over, so that's why now, we're currently working with the Office of Head Start now for the second phase of that, so that we can secure the rest of the funding before it's done.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. So you're relying on periodic infusions of grant funds. So are you anticipating that forever?
No, no, they will not be available forever. It was just a certain pot of money that the Office of Head Start had, and so they said that really, if you want it, you have to get in on it now, because they're doling out the money only as long as that pot of money lasts. When that pot of money runs out, that's the end of that, that money.
So then how do we replace it internally?
Well, we're hoping that if we're done building it, we won't necessarily have to.
If you're what?
If we're done building the centers, the two centers.
It's for an expansion and construction piece.
Oh, it's just construction?
Yes, yes. It's a three-phase grant. The first, the first 1.2 that we got, or slightly less than 1.2
My apologies.
was to plan it, and then the second part will be to build it, and so it's, it's a three-phase, a three-phase grant.
I'm embarrassed, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
No, no, no. So it'll just be there, we'll have it, and the only thing we have to worry about going forward, like everything else, is staffing it and then putting the kids in there.
Okay. Tiffany, is that you?
No, that would be you and Ken.
Okay, is Ken here? There he is.
Okay, so big goal five pre-kindergarten, by 2030, two-thirds of kindergarten students will have participated in a district-affiliated program, and the short term was to increase it by 200 seats for the end of FY21, and Dr. Savage has been diligently involved in planning expansion opportunities.
Well, I certainly can't take the credit. It's our whole operations team is continuing to contribute to this big five goal by building and identifying more spaces for this essential programming to occur. So the pre-K building renovations that James Stevens, which you have up on the screen there, will be finished by this winter holiday break. That's gonna open up 13 classrooms and a total of 234 total student capacity that can exceed that 200-student-a-year target. Now Tiffany Franklin, who you just had up here, continues to work with early learning to determine the programmatic side of this equation in terms of which programs will run out of that building and programs that can be moved and so forth. But I also wanna mention, well, it isn't just for this year, all of our future elementary buildings that we've included room for pre-K seats, that we're continuing to add capacity for our early learning programs in whatever variety makes sense, whether that's fee-based, hybrid models, VPK, Head Start, early Head Start, or exceptional student education pre-K, among other programs. This includes all the schools on our current horizon, so down in Astero we're building, as well as Franklin Park to rebuild, the recently acquired property over at J Weaver Hips, the Innovation School, Elementary J out in Lehigh, and even Veterans Park Campus as we expand that particular piece. All of those are areas that we'll be expanding our pre-K access as well for those seats, and they'll be adding permanent pre-K capacity. So it's a lot of seats that's gonna be added to try to support this goal.
And that winds up Objective Two, so any questions you have around kindergarten readiness?
Ms. Patrica, please.
I actually have questions on student achievement and kindergarten readiness, the first two goals we've talked about, but I was saving them to the end. Should I be jumping in as we go, or?
I think that's what everybody's kind of been doing.
All right.
So do you have something to ask?
It's not for you, it's for kindergarten readiness in general. The pre-K articulation agreements, we had some discussions surrounding this, but I'm not, I'm not hearing what we're doing differently. I recall this being a goal a couple of years ago, going out to pre-K providers and trying to get them on board to be district-certified pre-K providers, but because of the low wages associated with that industry, we were unsuccessful, and I didn't really hear anything different in the plan that you brought forward today. So what am I missing that's going to make this different?
Well, I'm not understanding the question. So the program that Dr. Burr presented in the goal is just getting our elementary school principals to meet with the providers that surround their centers, and to have what we're calling articulation meetings, so that might be between the school administrators and the center administrators, between the kindergarten teachers and the pre-K kindergarten teachers. So for example, like one of the activities that surround that is really just, at the beginning of the year, pre-K teachers go into kindergarten classrooms to see what that looks like, and then at the end of the year, kindergarten teachers are going into pre-K classrooms to see what that pre-K year ends like, so that they have that alignment between the two.
Ms. Patrica, maybe I can clarify a moment. I think the two, there are two different programs. I believe what you're referring to was a preferred, preferred provider program, and that was a goal a couple of years ago. Working with the pre-K providers, they found that they weren't really interested in becoming preferred providers. They didn't feel that there was enough value in it for the cost for them, so that dropped off last year as, excuse me, as a goal. It was still something going on in the background, but it was not a goal. The goal is now to really work with those providers, to develop a relationship between those and the schools, and that's that pre-K articulation goal that they're talking about, and it's basically just developing those relationships, bringing some of the pre-K teachers in and having them meet with the kindergarten teachers so that they understand how things are taught in kindergarten, particularly phonics, because phonics instruction may be very different in the pre-Ks, and so students were being asked to learn two different ways. It's also helped some of those kindergarten teachers have someone to reach out to when they, when they get the students in. So I think there's the two different goals there, and maybe that's where the confusion was.
And we're still working, just so, even though it was dropped as a goal, we're still working on that preferred pre-K provider program, like I was explaining earlier to Ms. Vaughn. The problem with that is, it does take, you know, a lot of money to be quality, to be a quality program. The district, we're fortunate enough that we can have pre-K teachers who have a bachelor's degree. That is not, you're not going to find that anywhere else in, in the community necessarily, because their requirements are much lower than ours. And granted, that's not one of the expectations that we have, but that's just an example of how, for them, what we consider to be a quality program takes work on their part, and it's difficult to put in that work if there's, you don't feel like there's a lot of money or a lot of benefit in that to you. So, you know, we want them to understand what those benefits are, and there is some grant money there, and so we're trying to figure out what is it that we can do for them that will give them enough incentive to wanna participate in that program.
Okay, and then why are we encouraging decreasing chronic absences at any level of education during a global pandemic? Aren't we supposed to be encouraging people to stay home if they don't feel well?
Well, chronic absence includes not signing into a virtual classroom, a Home Connect, or a, one of, one of those things, but absolutely, if they're sick, we are still encouraging them, but, you know, it is a goal, the more that they're, they're, and learning, the better prepared they're going to be, and so a lot of times, chronic absence doesn't necessarily have to do with illness. It has to do with, you know, family circumstances, or, you know, stress in the home, or things like that, and so it's, it's working. We have this, one of the things on the slides for that was social worker involvement and parent-family advocates who, who can help parents understand the value of getting to school when you are able to be at school. But absolutely, we are not encouraging people to come to school sick. We're just encouraging them to stay home only when they're sick and to be engaged in education opportunities the rest of the time.
Okay, I think my other questions are about the previous, the academic, the first part.
Do you ask that now, or do you want to wait to the end?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, we have three more sections in this, and it looks like we're 31 out of 86 slides with about 45 minutes to go. I don't know, my recommendation would be that the questions are asked after each section, so we're not having the running discussion throughout the presentation, we can get back on track.
That's fine, yeah. I'm watching the time.
Can I go to number one then?
Thank you. Sorry?
I thought we were waiting for questions all the way to the end of the briefing, so I didn't get to number one. Can I ask those questions now, or should I wait to the end of the briefing?
With regards to the first section, you have questions, I would ask those, and then we'll be done with that section.
So have we abandoned the notion of adding instructional minutes to the high school day?
No.
No, okay. When do we get graduation rates from, from this past year?
Shelley's coming up right now to talk about what they're projected to be. We'll get them in December, I believe.
Okay, and this is more of a comment. Ms. McClung mentioned that silos have all but disappeared as a result of the pandemic here at the district, right?
Well, that may be a little strong, but I said they're in much better shape than they've ever been before.
And I think Mr. Davis probably would have liked to have seen us where we are today, six months after he joined the organization, but the point is, we were forced into that situation where these silos had to sort of disintegrate to a certain extent, and our kids in our classrooms and our teachers in our classrooms have been forced into some circumstances, some of which have been good and some of which have been bad, and as we talk about our strategic plan, I wanna make sure that we're all thinking about what is working here and what is not working here. What can we continue, when this, when this whole thing is over, what can we continue to implement, what can we maximize, how can we improve in a sustainable, revolutionary way, the way we deliver instruction to our kids? I want, I don't see that in this strategic plan, and I wouldn't expect it to be part of the strategic plan, but I want everybody to be sort of thinking in those terms, from, you know, the, every level of employee, there's something for every single one of us to learn in this, and how can we get better? I would hate for us to get through this pandemic and go back to our silos. I would hate for us to go through this pandemic and not maintain some version of Lee Home Connect for students for whom it works. Whatever it is that, that worked, let's gather the data from that and keep an eye toward implementing that on a long-term basis. And then I have one last question, which is Objective One, Goals Two and Three. This is back in the academic stuff. I didn't understand those slides, Dr. Atkins. Maybe you can put me in touch with a member of staff who can tell me what that data means, because it just didn't make any sense to me.
Okay.
That's it, I'll shut up now. Thank you.
But just the quick response to what you said is, I think, I mean, I think that should go without saying. One of the things that we talk about quite frequently is, what are we learning and how can this improve instruction moving forward, and, and what additional opportunities are we able to offer students as a result of what we've learned through the use of the infusion of technology and the collaborative means in which we have been working. And I think, again, I think I've said this before, but one of the most obvious is that no matter where a person resides at this point, I think you can have access to a wonderful education, and now potentially maybe courses that you wouldn't normally be able to have access to, or that remarkable instructor that may not be available near where you live. So that's, that's just one of many examples that are out there.
But I think that what sometimes we, we lose sight of is that 1% of school districts across the nation, that's 140 out of 14,000 school districts across the nation were able to bridge the digital divide. Lee County was one of those 140, and it wasn't just a matter of providing technology to students and teachers, it was a matter of having the instructional materials in place to serve as a stopgap. You know, I'm plugged into, to districts across the state, there's been a lot of struggle in this state, and we've had our struggles here in Lee, but they haven't been fundamental systematic failures, and I've seen that not just across the state, but across the nation. I think we need to keep in mind what we've done in Lee. I mean, it's been absolutely tremendous. I've got four kids, and I know that my kids are not reflective of the individual circumstances of each student in this district, but the transition for them, for the fourth-quarter shutdown and for the return to school has been completely seamless, 100% seamless. They have, they were able to keep up on their learning and go back to school and bridge whatever gap was there, so, you know, I mean, we're in the middle of tremendous struggles, but we've, we've gotta make sure that we keep an eye on what we have accomplished through this, and, and I'm not, I'm not feeling the love at the table today, and I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. We're gonna move now to Objective Three, which is increased college and career readiness, and we're gonna start with those graduation rates and the predicted rates for this year. Shelley Taylor?
All right, good afternoon. So very excited to come after pre-K, because graduation is really that philosophy that, it starts all the way down in the pre-K and the elementary year. So this data is not new, but it does can just show you the trends over the last few years. What's interesting is that if you look at our most recent, which is our 1819, and we have 83.7%, that, that equates to over 5,000 students, so 5,778 students, which I know is just a number, but we all know it's not just a number. There's, there's a ton of kids that are working hard, staff is working hard, families are working hard, community is, is being engaged. If you look at our overall increase, even within the most recent three years, and you were to look at the total of the students that we graduated, we've graduated over 21,000 kids just the last three years of our official data, so that kind of gives you an idea of the economic impact that Lee County is making. This data actually does not account for the number of students who do decide to stay in high school that fifth year and earn their standard diploma. So this is, this is solely those kids that are graduating with a standard diploma within four years of entering that ninth-grade year. Now, our official data will come to us, it typically comes to us about this time, and we are given about two weeks to look and correct that data and then get that back to the state, and then the state usually gives that back to us, sometimes right before winter break. Last year, it was right after winter break, so we look forward to that official data coming soon. The next slide. So our trends continue to increase, as we just saw, but one of the things about graduation is that we do have the tools in our district to project graduation data through our grad tracker, and right now, we're looking at a projection of about 88%. So some, some folks might say that's gonna be a little bit inflated, because we had the impact of the WCO graduation code that was only used for our May 2020 graduates, and that was due to the state putting that code in because of the exemption from the required assessments for our graduates from last year. The other thing on this slide that I just wanna point to is, we are continuing with our efforts for our different subgroups, specifically our ELL graduation task force. So every high school has an action plan, and Carla Huck and I do support the schools in their action planning to ensure that we are targeting events and making sure that we are addressing the needs of the ELL population, but at this time, in regards to our students But at this time, in regards to our students with disabilities, we have been able to make some pretty drastic increases, and we are no longer under the needs assessment that we were in the prior years with the state. We do have a dropout prevention focus area, which is, it's those students that are choosing to terminate school enrollment. For those of you that are familiar with our withdrawal codes, that's the W05, and we're looking at re-engaging those students. So they might choose to drop out, but then, within a number of just a few weeks, we're reaching back out to those students to see how we can re-engage them. And then lastly, just an update on the high school credit recovery program. So this has been on our priority. Last year, we got caught up a little bit in the pandemic, but we are looking at where our students are at the end of the first quarter this year, and then reaching out to those students second quarter, and getting this program up and running for January. Any questions for me?
I think we're going to wait until the end.
We're waiting until the end. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Davis. Good afternoon. I have the opportunity to share with you some information, sorry for the head turn, for Objective 3, Goal 2, increase the number of enrollments in career-themed courses. Now, this is just going to look like another goal was met, so I speak a little bit to what Ms. Patrica was sharing. There's a lot involved with meeting this particular goal. A career-themed course is a little bit different than a CTE course, in that it has an additional characteristic that a CTE course doesn't have natively, and that is that an industry certification is linked to it. So what does that mean? Well, we call this our gateway goal, because as part of the strategic plan, we want every one of our students not only to graduate with a high school diploma, but to also leave with an earned industry certification. And as you know, that ranges anywhere from a certified nursing assistant to Adobe Photoshop. We have welders, we have automotive service techs. So we run the gamut in Lee County. So we're very, very active about adding career-themed course options for our students, because they add industry certs, which adds college and career acceleration points to our school grade, and it also brings back funding to our schools in the terms of CAPE dollars. So we did meet this goal by increasing enrollment. And I'd also like to share that we do advocate and we are analyzing equity and access. Now that we've kind of have a strategy and a game plan of how a career academy is implemented at a school, now we're going in deeper and looking at making sure all students have access to these courses. Onto the next goal. So like I said, Goal 2, it was our gateway goal. We want to make sure that our students are leaving us with their high school diploma and an industry certification. These are globally recognized credentials, as you are aware. And if you take a look at our target being 50%, we wanted our graduates, those that were in the cohort, to actually walk away with a cert for FY '20. We were at 45%. And when you talk about having to pivot, we went into lockdown right before our testing season for industry certs. So the fact that our rate is at 45% with a loss, every district in the state was down by industries, with industry certs reported, except for one district. And so that shows that we were making strides earlier in the year to meet that goal. So we're very, very excited. We did take advantage of remote testing when it was available. And then, when social distancing was permitted, we opened an adult education classroom in our building over the summer to allow seniors to come in and try to capture those certs before they were no longer considered a student, because then we're not allowed to fund them. So we took advantage of that. And then, when we got back to school this year, we remote proctored students, which you may not know is a very secure process, and there's a lot of credentialing and security that we have to go through. So it's not just welcoming a student into a Zoom. We have to schedule it and then make sure that we are credentialed to do so. So we were able to recoup some of those lost certifications to count for 1920. I will tell you, we will be significantly lower. We're down about 31% 2019-20 industry certs earned over 2018-19. I will be back on November 4th to brief you more comprehensively about CTE at the secondary level in our district, and what we've done with the pandemic, and then what we're doing moving forward. So this is definitely a high level. And then the next goal, we wanted to increase the number of business and community partners involved in CTE initiatives. The key word there is CTE, because I can still remember the board meeting. I was, I think I was watching it on YouTube, and Cindy McClung said, I think, four, and there was a collective gasp across the board members. And it's not four for the entire district. Our district is so honored to have so many community and business partners. This was four groups, organizations that CTE worked with actively. And we said, you know what? This is a really good opportunity for us to now officially start tracking how many business partners we have. So we made it an official goal. And we've done this via the career advisory boards. So we sent out to every person who had ever said, I would like to be involved in CTE. We sent them out an invitation to be on our career advisory boards. We had an orientation. Dr. Atkins was a part of it. It was virtual. And then we allowed them to choose which high school they would like to be a part. And we call it a CAB, a career advisory board. And so that is why our target went up to 44, because those are 44 actual businesses represented in those career advisory boards. And they have, they will have their first meeting for this school year before Thanksgiving break, and they are held, they will be held virtually, and the high schools are taking over that process. But I do have a team member that coordinates it from the district office, so that high schools feel supported. So those are our career advisory boards. And I'll talk more about those on November 4th. And then finally, we wanted to bring an adult education goal into the process, because a lot of folks don't realize how impactful adult education services are to our community. Our primary focus are adult English language learners, but we also serve the population that is seeking their GED, their high school diploma. And what we wanted to look at is, we, our students come in as registered and then enrolled. Anybody can register, meeting certain criteria, but do they stay with us? And that's that 12-hour mark that we're talking about. Once they hit 12 hours of instruction in our classroom, they are considered enrolled. And the state starts to look at them as an actual student, and they fund us such and such. So not only are we providing instruction, but we're also earning revenue as a district. So as a team, adult education said, let's, how can we reduce that number so that our registered students aren't dropping out? And you can see, we absolutely did not meet that goal. Spring actual was 11%, because that was right during quarantine time. I will tell you, we've had some really awesome wins related to pivoting in adult education. Over the summer, so we went completely virtual, but we used our social media. We have a huge constant contact list, and we took all of our learning online. And we also took advantage of a rule that the state put out based on the executive order, that you weren't required to pre and post-test your adult ed students. Normally, the pre and post-test requirement requires them to physically be in your area. So we, this summer, had students from other countries enrolled, including Russia, and we had students from other states. So we were able to gain revenue from those students and also to instruct them. And what was really exciting about that summer process is, we learned about onboarding. We changed how our customer service model works in adult education, from the moment you sign on to who you're contacted by, and then how you're on-boarded, so that you feel like you're in a face-to-face classroom, even though everything is virtually. So for the fall, we normally have about 2,000 students enrolled. We have 10 physical sites and one online site. In this fall, we have three physical sites and one online, and we have 1,000 students. So that's pretty good for reducing drastically our physical sites. And we will continue, post-pandemic, to market, because we're really building a successful model for online adult education.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. And I'm looking at our time, so I'm going to ask the rest of our presenters to please just hit the highlights as quickly as you can, because we do want to reserve a little time for our board members if they have questions. Next up is Ms. Alavado.
So when we're thinking about increasing college and career readiness, we do have data on our advanced courses from last year. So while state testing was canceled, our students of advanced courses still had to submit work and take their exams. So we are very happy and excited to report that our participation for last year, we did increase the opportunity of our students who are taking those courses by 733 students. And as we kind of click through the data, Cindy, what you're going to see is, while we're increasing participation, we also increased achievement. So the first screen that you see is the increase in proficiency for our advanced placement. The next one is going to be our Cambridge. In Cambridge, you'll notice a large increase there. This is the program that we are continuing to open more doors for our students. Last year, we had 1,040 students take the ACE General Paper Course. And this year, we've increased our students taking that course to 4,384. So this is an area where we're looking at expanding our programs to make sure students have opportunity to advance coursework. And while we're doing that, we're still increasing proficiency. The next one shows the same thing with our IB data as well. So the last slide actually ties together, as we talk about breaking down silos and working together, the pieces that Rita just talked about with the CTE and the certifications. When the state looks at our data, they tie together our advanced courses, dual enrollment, and CTE certifications. And last year, had we had the data come out, we did increase, we would have been at 61 up from 55. So as we continue our efforts this year, we're hoping to see that data increase as well.
Thank you. Felice is going to talk to you a little bit about our tech colleges. And these are related to our Big Five goal, to increase the student job placements from our tech colleges.
Good afternoon. Regarding career education, our 2030 goals are set. So by June 30th of 2030, the total student job placements from the district technical colleges will increase by 100% to a minimum of 536 job placements throughout our communities. Our short-term goal, by June 30th of 2022, the total number of student job placements from the district technical colleges will increase 10% to a minimum of 845 job placements. These goals were set based on the FY '18 data, which indicated 768 job placements in our communities. When we received the results, we found that we actually exceeded the 2020, 2022 goal in 2019. Based on these results, we reset our 2022 goal to be 20% of our starting number of 768, for a minimum of 922 job placements by June 30th of 2022. As Dr. Atkins previously mentioned earlier this afternoon, the Lee Technical College leadership team is actively working with operations and academic services teams on the expansions, plans for each of our technical colleges. Most recently, we had an RFQ pre-submission meeting that was held on October 14th regarding expansion and renovation of Fort Myers Technical College. Once that project is completed, not only is it going to give us more seats in current programs that we offer, it'll also give us the ability to bring more programs and new programs that we're not offering right now that the community is asking for. Some of those programs are, it could be, but not limited to AutoCAD, machinery, and diesel. Dr. Atkins also mentioned Cape Coral Technical College. Understanding that is our smallest college and is in our largest city, we have a site visit prepared and ready for December for our leadership teams to go visit. If a decision is made to expand also on that site, we would be looking at automotive and marine service programs for that location. And then finally, for the public service academy, understanding that we have outgrown our site, once the new technical college location is identified and those plans are in works, we will move to that site. Our goal is to have all of our programs that we offer on our location. Currently, right now, our students and instructors travel a five-county-wide area for some of our high liability training that we can't offer on our current site. And then finally, I would like to thank Board Member Morgan, who is our board liaison on the construction advisory committee. She invited not only me, but all the directors of the technical colleges, Ms. Davis also, Director Davis in CTE, to have some dialogue with that committee. And I have to tell you, it was, it was very interesting to hear what that committee had to say and what they really didn't know, how we're funded, how we work, how we seamlessly work with this district, the commitment from the superintendent and this board. And it was, they were so excited that we actually started setting up for this current month in November, we're going to have lunch committee meetings at each of our sites, so they can come visit and see what our current students are doing while they are in session, so they can get a better understanding of what we do for the community. Thank you.
So that finishes up Objective 3, College and Career Readiness. Do you have any questions regarding that section, that objective?
Are there any questions, Ms. Patrica?
Just in general, Dr. Atkins, as we increase this focus on career and technical education, I just want to make sure we're keeping an eye toward the staff in the district who's supporting the increase at each level of education. I know that before the pandemic, we were looking at pushing the Excel bus down to at least 5th graders, right? And I know that we've had some reach into middle school. I just see that as this work increases, I just want to make sure that staff at the district has the support they need to do that successfully. And then, as we look at, they didn't call them business advisory committees, they called them something else, but where businesses come in and talk to the schools about what's needed. Have you looked at Dunbar, their business advisory committee, and the tremendous success that they have there as a potential for scaling up that model at other places? Those are my questions and comments.
The career one.
Oh, hi. Hi. Thank you so much for saying that about support down to, the Excel bus is almost ready to roll. So, and that's going to be for our 5th grader. So I'll be showing you a sneak peek picture of that on November 4th. And if you don't know, that's the Excellent Career Exploration Learning Lab for grade 5 students, because research shows that career interest should be started at the elementary levels. And the Perkins Grant opened a little tiny door, and again, we got through a loophole, and we were so grateful for it. And so that's how we're able to fund the Excel bus. So we're very excited. And we're grateful to transportation, because they donated it to us. So that is happening. I have two team members getting their CDL licenses, so that they can drive that Excel bus. So we'll be excited for you guys to tour that and interact with that. The board advisory committees you're speaking of are the career advisory boards that I mentioned, and Dunbar is our hallmark. And so we've asked them on a call when we presented to principals recently, and said, hey, you need to make sure that your first CAB meeting happens by Thanksgiving, and we're here to support you, and these are the kinds of things that we need you to address. Because ultimately, these career advisory boards, they're going to weigh in on, is a program sustainable? Something that was implemented 10 years ago may no longer have labor market alignment and may no longer be viable in our community. So we need our business partners to participate in that process. And Dunbar has done a phenomenal job of that. And so when Mr. Burnside said, do I need another one? I said, no. You need to show us how to do it well. So yes, we'll definitely be using them.
He unabashedly brings his students in front of all of those adults, and the things that they're doing in science and engineering and technology make the adults who've been in the profession for decades sit with their mouths open, like, how do you know that? I, as an adult in this field for 30 years, don't know how to do that. They're really, and then that, of course, leads to some donations to the program and just more connection to the school and to the community.
Yes. And that speaks to, if, excuse me for interrupting, if leadership changes, and the community and businesses have advocated for a particular career academy, it's not going to go away, based on leadership change, which that is sustainable for our community. And I will tell you, Carl raises the bar, and as we know, when we raise the bar, students rise to that. And he does that unapologetically. And I can remember, as a teacher at Dunbar High School in the Technology Academy, having a graduate come back the next year and say, I make more money than you do. And it was wonderful, so.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah. Two things. First of all, kind of putting together this part of the presentation, and also the earlier having to do with extended day for students in need and all of that. I don't want what I'm about to say to denigrate any of that, because certainly, we absolutely need that. But But one of the things that I see is missing from this is an emphasis on our gifted students. And I'm gonna, I'll make an appointment to talk to Dr. Spiro and Dr. Atkins on this, but I really, really feel that we do a disservice to our very top students. And I know our gifted, and especially high school. And I also wanted to comment on the fact that I have many, many years of background in teaching advanced-level classes. And when I moved to this district and went to Estero High School, I was absolutely shocked that we had AP teachers, they were doing AP at the time, and moved to ACE years later, were not required to have minimally a week-long college board background. As well, and Dr. Spiro and I have talked about that briefly, as well as we are doing, we have really, really smart kids whose potential is not being maximized. And we cannot forget that upper-tier percent of our kids. It's fine if they're self-selecting these advanced courses, but I don't have gifted endorsement from this state, but I did in Texas. There's a huge difference in the way that gifted students learn. And we have programs in our elementary, some of them, not all of them, but by the time we have the kids in high school, there's really nothing being done. I know we're short on time, so I'm not going to go into my reasoning on that. But again, I think that's missing from Envision 2030, and I would like to see it added somewhere, a goal for our top kids. And to be able to provide true gifted opportunities in high school and train the teachers completely. For instance, right now, one of my friends at Estero High School, who has a lot of background in ACE General Paper, is helping and tutoring the band director as he teaches General Paper. Not good. The final thing I'm going to say to kind of cement this and our lack of nurturing our top, top kids. I was shocked to see how few, when I first moved here, national merit semifinalists we have in this district, with the number of incredibly bright students that never have received any kind of encouragement on this in our entire district. And thumbs up, yay, kudos to them, eight kids. Collier had 13, much smaller school district, and I'm not even going to depress you with how many some of the school districts that I know of in other states that actually nurture these things. So that's what, that's my ask for us to include something in Envision 2030 for our gifted students. And I also will be going over the figures that we got on how the exceptionality of the gifted students, that money that we receive, the extra FTE, it seems to be funneled in a different direction, and that much of the money that we receive does not go to these gifted kids. And I first realized that from a question from one of my former colleagues at Estero, who teaches many gifted students and yet gets no financial benefit, not for her, but for materials for these kids. So can we, is, I mean, this is a work in progress. Has that been considered?
It actually is one of our KPIs, is looking at an increase in the percentage of students who take advanced-level courses. So we can work with that and build a stronger goal from that, certainly. Again, it is a work in progress.
Yeah, the advanced courses, that's not, that's not the same.
No, I agree, but I think that's our starting point.
Okay, but I'm hoping that that can be a discussion, and I would like to talk to whoever's involved with that so I don't take up any more time.
Dr. Spiro and I would be happy to meet with you regarding that goal.
Yeah, let's make it a point, because I want to go over some stuff with you guys. Thank you.
And we are just beginning to work on Division and Department Improvement Plans, so it's perfect timing.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Kittens?
Just a quick question, and it's probably for Rita. The CAB group, the 44 businesses, do you have a list of them and which schools they are attached to?
Yes. Would you like me to provide that? I'm sorry.
Could you please provide that for us?
Yes.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Petrika?
Yeah, we can't, I can't let this discussion end without making sure that when we talk about needed support and staff, we're also extending that to our technical colleges because I think Mr. Everly has stepped into a situation that required some immediate attention and has done a fantastic job. But I just, again, want to make sure that we have the staff there supporting both CTE at the high school level and at the college level so that we don't find ourselves back in a circumstance, again, where just too many balls in the air and you can't keep them all going. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll move on to Objective Four, which is workforce success. And we know that Dr. Pruitt's favorite strategy is brevity, and we're going to color on it this time.
Yes. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Board Members. So I'm probably the only one that's going to tell you that COVID impacted my data in a positive way. And so while I do want to acknowledge that everyone has worked really, really hard, and we've continued to make data-driven decisions and improve our work on a continuous basis, this data that I'm going to go through here is more a reflection on the fact that I believe, you know, people were afraid to leave their job. And so as a result, it has positively impacted our turnover and our retention rate. So that being said, you can see here that we had a, you know, the numbers look great there on school-based instructional personnel. And if you look at the next slide, which is our cohort groups, remember, if you look at, you know, industry-wide, the critical time for retention for teachers relative to high turnover is yours, you know, zero through four, so that's one through five. And so what you do is we look at those cohorts to see how we're tracking over that five-year period. And again, you can see here that it looks, that we moved in a positive direction but still didn't meet our goal. We were sixth out of 12th instead of seventh, and we do anticipate and do believe that what we are doing will continue to put us in a positive light relative to that. The next data point is one that we're sunsetting due to feedback, not only from some of you, but also from the superintendent. Instead of looking at the openings on the first day of school only in core areas, we're going to transition. If you take to the next slide, we're going to look at simply positions open on the first day of school regardless. And we're not, we are counting it, even if they've taken like a resource teacher and they're functioning in that position. If it's being an advertised position that we're trying to hire, we're counting that. So for this year, we had 56 openings on the first day of school. And so if you go looking now at the, what we started tracking just a couple of years back, and that's looking at our turnover rate relative to all of our employee groups, again, the data looks very favorable. We went down to, you know, 23.5% when our target was 27%. And I'm going to say to you again, that while I do think there's a lot of really positive work going on, I attribute this, that people, you know, wanted to hang on to their positions. So relative to the big five, as we're looking at that, our goal overall is to keep good employees employed. And so as a result of that, we're looking to reach that 90th percentile, and, but we were currently at 89.4%. And so our goal would be to reduce that by 1%, which again, which we did do when you're looking at the data. So if we can stay on track with that, we'll get to that 90th percent in 2030. So again, that's just a big blush of the overall. We have some more specific information if we get to it later in the presentation. Any questions?
I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pruitt. That brings us to the final objective, Objective Five, and this is brand-new for us this past year. We were trying to find a way to measure operational efficiency and effectiveness. So we asked every division to look at the work that comes out of their division and identify those key work processes. And so our goal around that was that 80% of those identified key work processes would meet or exceed the set standard.
I'm sorry, Cindy. Ms. Fisher, can you mute your phone, please? Thank you.
Thank you. So our goal was that 80% of those identified processes would set the standard for that specific process. And again, this was our first year, 76.2% of those, or 16 out of the 21 processes, did meet that standard. One of those still has data pending. So we could get up to eight, I'm sorry, 17 out of those 21. So we're going to look at different divisions. You'll see there's only one for academic services at the end because most of their key processes revolve around instruction, and you've already heard those results. So with that, we're going to turn it over to Dr. Savage for Operations Key Work Processes.
Well, thank you very much. We'll go ahead with Objective Process One, and it starts with transportation, the delivery and pickup of our students. And I just want to start to preface this, that one of the biggest challenges that I've observed since coming operations is that before you can monitor your performance metrics and your in-process measurement results, you have to make sure that your data quality is preserved. And that's a real big pet peeve to me, is that data quality is so important, you need accurate data in order to make decisions from it. So for many of the measures that had been submitted on their face, they look perfectly appropriate. But when you dig a bit deeper, you start to determine that the data is not always telling an accurate story. So let's start with transportation. So if you're looking at the data here, it looks like we're lagging behind our targets. But in fact, there are numerous sites, and I mean school sites, that are so close and they're geo-tagging, that the data is flawed for many of our school sites. So they're either on the same site or adjacent, and you think of like a manatee and an oak hammock. And so what this does unfortunately is that it distorts the data. So buses will look like they aren't showing up for one school at all, and so that will lower that school's overall number. So you might see a school's on-time delivery statistics that look like it's 50%. Well, in fact, it's not that half of the buses are not on time, it's that they aren't being properly tagged to the correct school, and that's a very difficult geo-tagging piece to resolve. The second culprit unfortunately that diminishes this data accuracy is the route splitting or route consolidation. These are things that are very difficult to do because they happen every single day at multiple schools all around the district, and so it'll appear in the data that a school bus never arrived on that campus, hence, you know, distorting that data. And so that's very important because, like, to give you an example, just a couple of weeks ago, I was reviewing the week's worth of data for transportation, and I noticed it looked like in our PM delivery, we were 89%. Well, once we cleaned up strictly the sites that had that geocoding issue where they're just happened to be adjacent, that number jumped from 89% all the way to 95%. And this completely excludes all the route splitting and the route consolidation, which is very common, specifically right now due to our driver shortage. So these are all things that impact this data, so it's good to focus on the on-time arrival. But I can assure you, if the numbers were really that low, you'd be hearing a lot more complaints from schools saying, boy, they're never on time, and they're not there, and in fact, it's just not the case. And so that's something we'll continue to work towards, but it's worthy to set this aim. I just want to make sure that that story is told. We certainly explained that in your board updates, we've sent that data to you, that we try to identify those schools. But to hold ourselves accountable, we put all those schools in here, but that's not necessarily a fully accurate story. If we go to the next slide, the safety slide, this is actually a real opportunity for us to enhance our safety and security situation in the district. So one of the biggest steps made last year was just trying to acquire a common language, high-quality, critical incentive program that we can use district-wide, and that's our Safety Response Protocol, the SRP, and with the training and materials that come from the I Love You Guys Foundation. Now, prior to my being in this position, the training program was an optional training that our school administrators could elect to take if they wanted. So this past year, the goal that had been set was to ensure that at least one administrator in each building elected to be trained in this protocol. However, in my experience, and our safety department's recommendation, was to move this out of the realm of electing this training and instead demanding that all administrators be trained in this high-quality, common-language protocol. Now, while we knew that there were already many required trainings competing for our valuable time, we just knew that it isn't sufficient to have only one administrator on a site trained because any administrator really needs to understand exactly what to do in a crisis. And if you've never had to lead a school in an emergency event, it's very hard to appreciate just how stressful that really is. But starting from not having a required program, installing this high-quality program, Title Four was enabled to support us with funding, and then getting all of us added to our mandatory administrative training and have it become part of our Master in Service Plan was a process. And then also to then have it added as an automated professional development within our enterprise learning management was such a high priority. And we've unfortunately had different events that we've been through this past year that just belie how important it is that every member of the administrative team really knows this. And so these goals reflect this change. So you'll notice that in the first few quarters, and part of this was because the I Love You Guys did not have a virtual training option, so it was only in-person training that could be offered. They were able to, through the fourth quarter, get up to 75% that at least had one trained, and then through the summer, additional training was offered. But now we've changed the measure, and that's what's reflected here in the fiscal year 21, that now, instead of just having one elect to it, it's all administrators at a school site. And so the measure looks like 39%. How could it have gone down from 75? Well, that's because now these are, this is the percent of school sites that have all the administrators fully trained. So now that it's also, we had to develop our own online version of this training so that people could access it virtually, and of course, that's a COVID development, but it's something we wanted to do anyways. All of our safety trainings now have an additional virtual training component to it as well. It's a lot of explanation, but just something very important that we thought would be very important to the board as well, to upgrade this expectation. And our target, of course, is 100% of school sites for this year. Objective Five, Process Three, shifts over to maintenance. And so for this maintenance slide, the issue of data quality rears its head again. A worthy target and wanting to close out work orders within 90 days is an excellent focus. But why is it that every year, when you look at this data longitudinally, that the first quarter looks very, very low? Then all of a sudden, it jumps up. Well, what it revealed really was that they have an extraordinarily heavy paper-heavy process, and for each part that has to be ordered on a particular work, there's a piece of paper that goes in a basket, and then those pieces of paper have to be manually entered, and all of that has to be done before those work orders can be closed out, including sign-offs by supervisors and so forth. So all of this paper process, that's what takes this lag. Let me make this a perfect example for you. Right now, at Royal Palm Exceptional Student, Exceptional Center, they have 14 open work orders. All of those workers have actually been completed, but their showing is open in the system because they're of a lag in this process. And that was affirmed by their building supervisor. All work is done. So again, that's counting against them, looking like they haven't done it in three months, their 90-day timeline, but it more reveals an inefficiency. So kudos to maintenance, working directly with Kathy Ebaugh's team and our Information Systems Department analysts. They are transitioning from this paper-heavy process to completely paperless. And they're excited to do it, they're helping, and they're enthusiastic about it, and we're already seeing some great returns in just awareness of that process by making that. So just tackling that really important work to try to bring everyone to a more efficient piece, because that efficiency really has huge payoff for us in that, you know, once that's done, you're reducing the labor of having to enter those manual forms, you're reducing the chance that things will be lost or entered incorrectly, requiring additional signing and paper, all that lag and waste, and dramatically our ability to enhance in real time to our customers out in the schools and folks in the, in other school sites, in other non-school sites via these digital tools. Moving into achieved objectives, Objective Five, Process Four and Five is construction. Well, Scott is going to hate me for this because when I look at straight hundreds across the board, I know that makes him happy. But for me, you know, that's an opportunity for us. To me, once you're at 100, you've really plateaued to a pass-or-fail type of test. If you really want to see marked improvement over time, you have to keep digging deeper because unless you're walking around in pure perfection, that, as an organization, we just have to demand even more. So we're going to continue to look at that, and I look forward to bringing to you in the future something so that we'll, I won't have straight hundreds to put up in front of you. I'd prefer something a little bit different there. And so we're working on some of those in-process measures that will reveal any opportunity for improvement we have in construction. Moving to Moving to Objective Five, Process Six, this is a reflection of our planning department. And utilization truly is, this focus on utilization really drives a great deal of our long-term planning where capacity is most needed. Now, with our proximity boundary adjustments, this will have to change. But the result is that it will actually be a much more precise, more efficient situation. Because right now, while we look like we're achieving across the board, the only reason we are meeting our goal in the East Zone is because we currently bus thousands of students from Lehigh into the city of Fort Myers. Now, that may be where we have capacity, but that simply does not make good business sense, nor does it really support a real community-based school model. That's one of the reasons I'm so excited to elevate this conversation to be more precise and ensure that we're building schools exactly where we need them into the capacities that will serve us in the long term. I'm also so grateful for all the hard work that it took us, our district, not me, but the folks who preceded me, to earn that halfpenny sales tax. Because without that, some of what we're planning to do in the next five to eight years would not have been possible. So I have to pass those kudos of the flexibility that we just now have to capitalize on that moment because we earned that piece. So with that said, unless we want to pause till the very end to take questions, I'm happy to take operations questions unless we prefer to wait until the end of this whole goal set.
Yes, we'll wait until the end so that we can keep moving here. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Ms. Malley.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here to talk about the business services targets that were achieved and some of our goals for next year. The first one is our payment of invoices in less than 30 days for vendors. And this accelerates our vendor payment and turnaround and increases their confidence in us and our business relationship. It's a metric that we have monitored for a couple of years to make sure we're staying at a high percentage. And we have achieved our goal of over 98% payment within those 30 days. And so we are going to move this goal to become a department KPI, but not one of our overall KPIs. Next, we have a discussion of paychecks and making sure that they are processed online. So this routinely refers to pay for what you would consider as non-standard hourly or salaried work. So for example, when we have summer school pay or supplements or other things, this is district-wide to make sure communications go out. Everyone knows deadlines. Everyone gathers all their information, submits it on time. And then the pay is processed just routinely with your regular pay, which is more efficient for everyone and gets everyone paid quickly. So we have succeeded in achieving that goal. And we'll also continue to monitor and make this a department goal, but remove it from our high-level district goals. The third and final goal to chat about today in business services is the decreasing of time to turn around competitive solicitations. So we've been monitoring this and tracking it for several years, introducing new methods to prepare our solicitations sooner, evaluate them faster, get them to the board so that projects can start promptly and get the ball rolling. And what we've realized this year is we exceeded our goal. And so we will continue this to be a high-level goal going forward. We're looking towards automation in the actual RFQ review process. An exciting feature we're going to be rolling out here very soon is electronic smittle of all solicitations instead of vendors having to prepare and copy all of those paper documents for us to then carry around and manage and dispose of according to public records law, et cetera. So that'll be helpful for all. We will continue to have that goal as one of our district-wide goals. That affects our business partners and it's important. Additional processes, we're going to introduce our increased communication around the usage of our sales tax revenue. As you're all aware, we did roll out the Sales Tax Dashboard, which provides information to communities members. We'd like to roll this out more specifically to make sure parents are engaged and aware of what's happening at their schools. So we're going to be taking initiatives to roll out more information in multiple formats and increase the, with the goal of increasing the confidence in the district and spending funds at parents' schools that their children attend. And finally, a very important area in the schools is the financial management. The bookkeeper function is one that keeps each school up and running and compliant with audits and so forth. So we do tend to see a lower pay rate in the district for bookkeeper functions. We have done studies and according to other school districts who are comparable in pay. But according to our environment around us, in the private sector, people can be paid more for the job. So we do see a lot of turnover in this position. And it does bring great stability to the schoolhouse. So we are going to work with our partners in HR and academic services to increase field training, do everything we can to get the right people in the right locations and decrease turnover and therefore increase retention in the schoolhouse in our bookkeeper positions. And that's all I have for you today. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Dr. Pruitt for human resources processes.
And I just want to say, I have to apologize. We are five minutes over, so just so that everybody's aware of it. So I do apologize for that.
Thank you.
So for human resources, we were focused on 10 of our key work processes. And eight of those we met or surpassed. One, we're waiting because the state extended a deadline. And then the final one, we did not meet. And I'll just go through them really quickly. And the first focus is on professional development. And I know that sometimes I vividly hear it in my head about Ms. Morgan asking the question, how do you know that professional development is working? The best way we can measure that is by the people taking the professional development, indicating if they believe it's had a positive impact on their work and changed their work habits. So that's how we're focusing on that particular key process. And then our peer collaborative teachers and the work that they do in monitoring that, we have shown that that has been outstanding. Investigative misconduct, that's a KPI where we look at once a case has concluded, whether or not there was appeal put into place. And so as you can see there, we more than met that goal. In our recruitment area, we talked about this. We're going to be looking at openings on the first day of school, all openings, not just core areas that are still open. We still do monitor our connects to hires because we know that the more connections we make, that increases our pool, which in turn increases, you know, more people we have sort of in the pool for hiring purposes. When we looked at and continue to update, looking at our data and why people leave the district and what is an indicator for people at risk, one of those are folks that are non-traditional teachers that have additional requirements in order to meet certification. So we monitor that on a regular basis. And we are looking at the non-compliance related to that. And the reason that one is in transit is because the state, due to COVID, has extended the deadline that folks can meet that. So we don't have that data yet on folks that have not, you know, that have been let go due to not meeting their certification requirements. As part of our insurance program, there's a lot of things that we do relative to that. And we've done very well in administering those employee benefit programs. And job descriptions, we continue to update and align those on a regular basis. And then the Process 18 is the one that we did not meet. And that's really a reflection on funding from the state. I mean, we were really doing on target, especially with the teachers, in terms of getting upwards of 70% of market rate. It's really put a wrinkle in things with the 47.5 and that requirement. So we're going to be reevaluating all of that to see where we land once we finish with negotiations and how that looks in our comparison across the state. And in terms of our non-instructional positions, we're in a little bit better, but we're still not at the goal that we were looking to do. And then evaluations, one of the things from the data that we saw is that timely feedback is really important. So one of the things we're looking at is the completion of the evaluations. Again, another standard that we met. So that's a very brief and quick overview of key work processes in human resources.
Thank you, Dr. Pruitt. Mr. Davis.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I've got one to share with you today, but it certainly doesn't represent all of the facets of Information Systems Division nor the accomplishments of all of the incredible employees that work in ISD. But most importantly, I think this is a great example of composite work. Because without the opportunity to work across all of our divisions in business services, with academic services, and of course, all the other areas of our business, we would not be able to make these kinds of numbers happen. And most importantly as well, the board's support. Most recently, you know, with the ITN increase or the advance, you helped us continue these numbers. So with this, I challenged my division back at the start of FY '20 to negotiate and innovate. That's what we say, negotiate and innovate. So when it comes to cost containment and working with our vendors, for example, to ensure that we have the best labor available, the best cost, you know, to the district. But most importantly, how to innovate the processes that we may have in place that help us get to where we can exceed, you know, what we have in play here. So I challenged them to increase across all of our sales tax projects, you know, by 25%. And this is area of Promethean Board Deployment or AV upgrades, safety and security specifically in surveillance and access control, and also in the area of elementary density. Now, I will tell you, I could have inflated the number, or inflated the number in Quarter Four, being that it was right at the start of COVID-19. But I felt that was a bit artificial because we used some of the GovDeals inventory in order to scale elementary. So what we're doing to get a more accurate number is to wait until, you know, the summer, in this case, the start of FY '21, to report back to you actual numbers with regards to the elementary density increase. As you know, we shifted more to a one-to-one. So let me also say that, and I think Dr. Savage and Susan as well did a fantastic job of highlighting some great examples of composite work and breaking down those silos. You know, the reality is, without the partnership of each of the organizations that I mentioned, we wouldn't have been able to be as efficient as we have been. And, you know, technology, right, is the great enabler, right? Certainly when paired with strategy and commitment and programs, that's some of which you've heard today, for example. But, you know, we're talking about internet services and infrastructure down to the endpoint systems that each individual student uses to learn. So with that, I'm very proud of the team. But I'm also, you know, prouder for the district and each of my colleagues in each area that allowed us to achieve or exceed our goal of 100% in this case and achieve 25%, an additional 25% above and beyond. I will tell you our run rate at the moment, and Dr. Pruitt had mentioned, you know, really briefly, Dr. Pruitt had mentioned that she might be the only one to share some positive outcomes of COVID. But I will tell you that from the very start, we realized that there would be some excess labor in our market. And the ability to actually up the number of projects that we have, we have some that are on pace to do upwards of 60 to 65% above what we're doing right now. And that is being, you know, ongoing as we speak. And that's using labor that's available. We also took advantage over the summer, of course, of not necessarily having, you know, all the staff and students, of course, in buildings and end of Q4 to actually increase much of the work that we got done. So it is a great testament to not just the folks in ISD, but also, you know, across our district too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then our last key process comes from academic services. And Mrs. Ralph is going to talk to you about student enrollment.
So with student enrollment, I will also say that parents found COVID a positive with student enrollment because they were able to upload their documents from home and email them to us. We focused a lot on at the beginning of the school year, how to do things in a timely, positive manner because we wanted the experience in student enrollment to be a positive one for families. We gathered data for the first two quarters. And then when COVID hit, we changed everything, which is a plus for us now because working virtually and electronically has enabled us to be better prepared when we roll out Focus, which will be our student enrollment process beginning 11 months from now. So while our data is, we were doing really well by meeting that 30 minutes, everything changed on us. So we continue to look for ways to make it a positive experience. And we'll be back in touch after we find out all those details.
Thank you, Mrs. Ralph. Our final Big Five goal has to do with proximity. Since you were updated on that today, we're not going to go into those details. Just a reminder of that timeline and you are getting regular updates upon that. So with that, we've completed our presentation. I'm going to go ahead and show you our next steps. And then if you have questions, we'll come back to that real quickly. But I did want to show you the upcoming schedule. On the number four, we'll talk about the superintendent's action plans related to his evaluation. And then you'll see at every upcoming meeting, we'll have a more in-depth review of each objective until we get to March. And then we'll have another mid-year review, which will be more of a broad overview, similar to today, but not as long since you will have had some in-depth information along the way. So with that, I thank you for your time. Apologize for going over, but would still like you to have the opportunity if you have any additional questions for our team.
Okay, Ms. Patricca.
So two questions, I think, for Ms. Malley. The bookkeeper goal that we have, what data were we relying upon to determine that that was even a problem in the district? It seems kind of random.
So there is just one bookkeeper in each school. So that's where all the financials are. And you have, of course, internal funds and budgeted funds. So our internal audit department goes out and audits the internal funds. And we use our PeopleSoft system for tracking the other things. So what we're realizing is when we have bookkeeper turnover and we need to be onsite more, we need to actually pull from central office staff and place them in schools to go and perform the functions, which puts a strain on central office staff to perform their work. So the high percentage of turnover is impacting the schools who needed to complete their financial, you know, they're required to make their cash deposits daily without a bookkeeper, you know, who's assigned to the banking, et cetera. So a combination of needs within schools who reach out to central office, both internal audit and procurement and finance and budget to add additional support and the strain that places on us when we're out of the office because we are physically located there, taking care of the paperwork that's coming in, going to the banks, et cetera. So just recognizing those things and making it a more safe financial environment for the schools, we think, is a priority.
No, I get that. What I, do we have comparison data for other districts of similar size to see what the turnover is? Like where did we get the 70% or the 80%?
Oh, those numbers are historical records of what our retention rate has been. So we have been monitoring this for a couple of years. We've looked at things innovatively, like can we have a traveling bookkeeper position so that when there are multiple vacancies, we can go to different places? We've looked at can we have a bookkeeper be shared between multiple schools? So the data that was presented was the historical turnover, which is in the 23% range. And so our goal is to reduce that turnover to increase stability in schools and also to allow central office staff to perform their functions.
So maybe it would help me to understand better if we had some comparison data from other districts of similar size. Because maybe 50% turnover is normal and we're doing great. You know, I don't know. Looking at our own historical data doesn't tell me anything. I'd like to see it for other districts as well.
Certainly, we'll work with HR to make sure that we kind of have market data to compare with others.
I'd appreciate that. And then my last question is, the sales tax question doesn't seem to match up with what you're looking for. You're looking to determine whether the public thinks we're spending sales tax dollars correctly. And then the question is about the overall financial health of the district or the school or something, the two. I mean, we understand the difference between capital dollars and operating dollars. We understand budgeting that goes to a school versus budgeting of downtown. There's a lot that we understand. And the question that you asked doesn't seem to get to the goal that you have there. So I get a little bit concerned about the accuracy of the data we'll get back.
Okay. Okay.
Those are my questions and comments.
Thank you. Ms. Jevon Ellie, did you have any questions?
I did. Mine was actually from the, regarding the graduation rate. I, that's near and dear to my heart because it's really important. And I know we've been approached a couple of times, and I've talked to Dr. Atkins about it. And I just want to throw that, because there was a talk about the credit recovery and what we're doing, and they didn't really, weren't really told exactly what that looks like and what's going on. And I know that could be, you know, lots of things going on in the school. But there's still that Acceleration Academy that's a possibility. And that brings, you know, the FTE dollars back, some dollars back to the district. And it's all about, you know, getting our graduation rate up there, even though that may not be even accounted for in the year that it hap, you know, after, I guess, that separate accountability, right, with the state? That's what, I just understood that.
So just two, maybe two updates for you regarding that. I know that Mr. Sarah reached out to me and wants to, he wanted to have a, just another opportunity for he and I to sit down. I invited Dr. Spiro to that as well with the, with I think the lead at that company. A company representative, so I'm going to do that. And then Dr. Spiro, I know, has been working to get an appointment with you to get in a little bit more detail with, to you personally, since you asked that question in one of our one-on-ones. So those are two things that we've got upcoming.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Lots of work.
Anyone else? Thank you so very much.
And I'll report back once we have that sit-down with Mr. Sarah and the Acceleration Academy representative, who's different than the one that you all have worked with previously.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
I just, I have an overall comment on the strategic plan. As I look at the actual strategic plan on the website, we have three circles with our four goals, student success being at the middle. I've mentioned before the possibility of adding equity and diversity as a fourth leg of that stool. And I'm wondering when or if this board is willing to have that conversation. I believe that everything we do should be looked at through the lens of equity and diversity. And I, like, I see, Dr. Atkins, we've had this conversation before. Does our employee workforce reflect the diversity in the community? And it doesn't, and there are a lot of reasons for that. As you said, we have a significant population of people here that are retired and aren't working. So are they being included in the numbers? Are we making fair comparisons in terms of the people that are working for the school district as compared to the people who are available or have a desire to work for the school district? I think we have to get our arms around this a little bit better before we can put goals in place. But I don't see any goals surrounding equity and diversity, and I think that's really important in a majority-minority school district. So I throw that out there to the board to see if you have any appetite to.
Well, I do want to remind you that we do have, you know, closing the achievement gap goals all through the academic plan. And this is not just proficiency, but also graduation rate. So you're going to find that embedded, and diversity there speaks to a lot of different types of diversity. We also, if you look at some of the data that you've seen Dr. Pruitt present to the board, and we can continue to come back with that as well, where they look at what is the percentage of people who apply versus the demographics that we have here in Lee County? And you'll see that every time she reports, it's pretty much in alignment with what we see, the number of people that we actually, that apply for a job, who actually receive a job versus the demographics that are out there. And then finally, we are in a transition, Lee County, you all know that. We've seen, I've seen it just in our workforce in terms of what we've seen diversity in our own district staff down here in even the short time that I've been superintendent. I've seen tremendous differences in diversity of our executive team. But I think that trend is going to continue because as you go younger, you're more diverse in Lee County. As you get older, you're less diverse. But, you know, we watched elementary school was predominantly minority-majority, and then it went to middle school. Now we're that way as an entire district, and soon that's going to be the workforce. So I think, you know, you do see those trends, but we would be happy to have that discussion with you further to get some additional goals the board might want to get their hands around. I will say, we have to be careful of those goals. We tried one back in HR a while ago when I was the chief of HR. And then the next thing, you know, we knew I was trying to set quotas on terms of our hires, can't do that. Ms. Bruno would tell you that. But we certainly have things that we can do.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Well, that ends that portion. I know we went over 30 minutes, so I do apologize again. And I thank every one of you for being here and your great presentations. I mean, it was worth the 30 minutes to me. So I appreciate you all. So next on the agenda is public comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. Whoops, go back to my first page here, sorry. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter from this meeting's agenda. If you completed a blue card, please put it in the basket provided at the back of the room. If you need a card, they are located in the hallway outside of the boardroom, and we ask that you sign the public comment list. The rules concerning public comment are posted at the back of the room. Public comment will be made from the central microphone in the back of the room. Please be advised that the board does not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. At the end of the public comment period, the board vice chair, Ms. Jordan, will address concerns or the assignment of any concerns or requests to the superintendent. Board policy 1.181 requires the wearing of masks during public comment unless you have been provided with an accommodation. We would ask that you use the sanitization supplies which are provided near the microphone. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. The purpose of the public comment is to provide feedback on today's agenda. Personal attacks on individuals or abusive language are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone. The time per speaker is three minutes. Please state your name to make your public comment. Madam Chair, there are two speakers that wish to address the board.
Thank you. Are there anyone else in here who have not put in a card? Okay, we can begin then.
The first speaker is Eric Engelert. Engelert.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. Question that brought, been brought to attention are the, and I'm from Lehigh, okay? And I lived in Lehigh for nine years. My mother was a school teacher for 33 years. I was always told to respect school boards and superintendents. That was the way I was taught. Question is dealing with the trailers and the lack of construction going on in Lehigh Acres. In this meeting, many people have acknowledged that Cape Coral is the largest city in Lee County. Lehigh Acres is actually the largest community of 133,000-plus people. Every time I see these trailers, that reminds me that basically we are not getting the services we are paying for. We voted for that half percent sales tax with the intention that that money would be used for people such as Lehigh Acres. 133,000 people is a lot of people. In the next two years, you're going to see 200,000 people. Key to this is we're seeing schools being built all over Lee County. We're not seeing these built in Lehigh Acres. These are discouraging. We moved here nine years ago. We own quite a bit of land out in Lehigh. We pay cash for our property. My wife's a doctor. I have a degree in law. Bottom line is, we love it here. Lehigh Acres is one of the best places in the world to live. But the bottom line is, we need to be, we're the forgotten children. I'll use a quote that Spencer Roche, Representative Spencer Roche, used. We're the stepchildren of the state of Florida. We are the largest unincorporated community in the state of Florida. We will incorporate in the next two years. I will mention this, I am the feasibility chairman of Incorporate Lehigh, okay? We are not ready to incorporate, but our tax dollars are very, very valuable to the county. This is a beautiful building. We don't have that in Lehigh Acres. Our kids, we have 1,600 students in classrooms that are considered transient or 20 years old. I was texting the fire chief when I was here. When was the last time I was inspected? I was inspected a year ago. I asked John Iglehart, the director of EPA, to look into this for asbestos, Chinese driveway, leg paint. These are things we have to worry about. Those trailers are 20 years old. Been brought to the attention that there's a project being built right now, and equipment is on the property right now for 10 more classrooms. What's it going to hurt to make the 10 more classrooms happen? If Lehigh Acres does move to incorporation, it's going to affect the county of how much money they're going to have. Gateway has a branded school.
Thank you, sir. Time is up. Thank you. Mr., our second speaker is Mr. Randy Scott.
Excuse me, I'd like to go there and speak at that podium where the 15 chiefs went throughout this whole ceremony. Is there a reason, is there parliamentary inquiry, why I can't go there when all the chiefs went there?
Because at this time, Mr. Scott, the policy is public comments are in the back of the room.
Could you please turn the light on for me so I can not be in the dark?
I'm sure we can accommodate that request.
And then also make sure Mr. Savage isn't behind me because the last time I spoke, he was making gestures on YouTube. You could see it. Thank you. Scott?
Yes, Mr. Scott, thank you for being here, but you have to have your mask on.
No, you don't. It's, that's not a requirement at this thing. If you read your instructions, it's a request.
At this, at this time, Mr. Scott, there is a board policy.
If you read the sign out there, it's a request. It's not a requirement. It says, "We request that you have your mask on when you speak."
Mr. Scott, if you don't have a particular medical reason or, okay. You have a medical reason for not wearing the mask? So we'll just verify that, Mr. Parfitt, if you can, I don't know if he's back there. If you can verify that and we can move forward.
On the record that you're going to verify it?
He's moving forward to verify it, sir. We do have a board policy that's in effect at this time that requires everyone who enters this building to wear a mask, unless there's a medical condition, otherwise that will provide you with accommodations to not wear the mask. You just need to explain to him confidentially what the issue is, and then we will move forward with the accommodation.
Specifically what my health condition is?
Mr. Scott. That's, that's the policy that we have. You don't have to tell me. If it's okay with Mr. Parfitt, we can move forward. Okay, please move forward.
Can you put the two seconds back?
She's going to restart it if you just give her a minute, please.
My name's Randy Scott, and I find it interesting that 85% of what you did today was all administration business. We've been told over and over again by the board policy that this stuff is Atkins' responsibility. So what are you doing listening to all these beautiful presentations? It doesn't make any sense because these are Atkins' duties, every one of them, right? You're policymakers, not administrators, for fulfillment of them policies. So this was a waste of time, and it's typical of what this board does. And I'll tell you what else is typical of what this board does. You have a new program called Envision 2030. It's a mock. It's a bunch of bull. Vision 2020 wasn't fulfilled. 100% of the matrix was not checked. So now we're just going to slide over to vision, to envision 2030? It's ridiculous. The time, you went over, what, 35 minutes? It's horrible. You have all these chiefs sitting right here in these exclusive seats, and then you allow them all to go up into the front, right, and speak to you? But when the people, when the people are to speak, no, we can't do that. And you want to talk about being inclusive? Then we get ahead and hear about diversity. Ms. Patrica says, "What are you doing about diversity and equity?" And Mr. Atkins responds, "You know, why don't we just hire the best person? Why don't we get out of this leftist agenda of hiring someone because of the color of their skin? Why don't we start looking at the content of their character? Why is it transportation appears to be the dumping ground based on the color of your skin? That's horrible." I talked to my brothers and sisters there when I used to work there. Says, "Well, why are all the black people in transportation?" It's so obvious to me, but I'm not going to be a white savior. You know, I'm not going to be the one who's going to cause them to rise up and let's do something about this. It's individual pride, but frankly, they've been whipped too much, even by their own people, to stay in their lane. And I think that's what onboarding has done to almost all these board members. You forgot what your duties are with this board. Why don't you read it? Why don't you read what your constitutional authorities are here? Instead, you're on-boarded by Atkins. You've all become his tool, 100%, his tool, and his administration and his staff. I mean, you know, I don't know what we're going to do about that. It's going to have, something's going to have to break, and maybe after this election, we'll start getting more action. And by the way, attorney, I'm still waiting for the Court of Appeals to rule on the public records involving the bribery. Thank you.
That concludes public comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Engel, Enghardt, excuse me if I mispronounce your name, from Lehigh. I really appreciate you coming in here. We know that that is an issue in the East Zone, and we are committed to making sure that the schools are being built where they need to be built at. But we really appreciate you being here. Mr. Scott, thank you as always for coming in and sharing with us. We appreciate your voice and look forward to having you here again. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. It's my turn. Okay, so board member comments, we are on now. I'm going to start with Ms. Jevon Ellie, please.
I have none.
Ms. Patrica?
I don't have much, but before your staff left, I should have told, I should have said this. I, my very first school board meeting was presentation of Vision 2020. And I remember just being so excited, like, wow, I just joined an organization that's really moving forward. And I think we're all a little tired and a little pandemic wary right now. So I'm not sure that staff got that same sense from our comments at the table here today. But whenever we talk about the future and I see where we're headed, it does make me really excited. And I was excited to come and hear this part of the briefing meeting today. Because it does, it does, it gives me hope for the future. And when I see the staff that you have assembled, it gives me even more hope for the future. So I wish I had said that while they were here, but I didn't. And I don't really have anything to report in terms of my board report, so that'll be it for my comments today. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan, let's see. I have, piggybacking off what Ms. Patrica said, I also regret that staff's not here. I have been saying since last spring that the reason this district stands out in the state of Florida is because of the leadership and the way they've shown that they work together. And I thought that despite my comments, which some may have interpreted as critical, and I did not intend to be that way because I really misunderstood the intent of the presentation. I think this is an extraordinary school district with enormous promise. And it is because we have a plan and everybody is on the same page, doing the same plan. So I apologize for any negative emanations from what I said. With respect to Vision 2020, or 2030, when it goes up on board docs or wherever it goes, it would be really helpful to me to know what the comparables are that were used to establish the goals that have been set because, you know, we're not going to go back and look at them every time. look at them every time, but if they're there, you know, that I think answers some of the questions that were, were raised. CTE, piggybacking off of what Todd Everly said, that Construction Advisory Committee was a great meeting. Rita Davis was there, Charlie Pease, John Rozell, Todd Everly. The committee members were, as Todd said, astonished by what they heard about the breadth and depth of the career opportunities and the certifications being offered. And these are people in the construction industry, and they had no idea, primarily the, you know, the architects and the engineers, but no idea. And they were really gung ho to get on advisory committees, to work with schools and the technical colleges to move this stuff forward. And one of the comments I made, I think it was to Todd at the end, was, "I think once we have the CTE plan formalized, I really think we need to have a community-wide presentation of our technical colleges to industry and commercial business in Lee County." Whether it's, you know, Broadway Palm, you invite everybody in the business community, and we get up and we talk about our technical colleges, and we talk about our programs. Because I really do believe that people don't, don't get what we're doing because we can't advertise. So, I think I beat that one to death. I wanted to respond to something that, Chris, Ms. Patrica mentioned about diversity and inclusion. I would prefer as a board member not to have that conversation until after we go through the four sections that are already on the agenda because I believe, as Dr. Atkins said, that what she's looking for is already embedded in the various plans that we have. And so, I think before we have a discussion about creating another goal or whatever, we have to get through and see if it isn't, in fact, embedded in all of the other plans. And those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
I thought you were going to go there first. Okay.
I go all over.
I know. You keep us on our toes. I don't want to take up much time because I know we need to move on. I have a couple of questions, but I put down the slide number and the person that presented, and I will get with Dr. Atkins and get with them on a later date. I do want to say that Mr. Engelhardt's comment, and I, as one of my constituents, I will make it a point to bring him up to date on the other things that we are doing at this point. And hopefully, in the near future, we'll have even some more reports about what's happening in the East Zone. As the liaison to the CSI committee, we talked at our last meeting about this presentation. And thank you, Cindy. And so, this will be taken back to the committee and, excuse me, I'm sure we'll talk about some of the questions and comments that came out of this to go back to the committee and get their input and then be able to come back. I would suggest, this was, yesterday, we talked about meeting times and, man, I got in my throat. We talked about meeting times and agendas and all of that. This is a very important discussion to have. However, I think the, this is one of the things that if we had put it even on the Monday or on another day, that we wouldn't feel rushed and not ask all the questions that may have come up. The strategic plan, I always say, is the crux. It's the motor. It's the heartbeat of this district, and it deserves to have whatever time we need to put into it. So, I am suggesting that in the future, we look at the timing and, you know, knowing that we have another meeting at 6 o'clock, that makes it kind of, kind of tough. And I really don't think we should rush this and feel that we're rushed to do it. I think that's it. Oh, one last thing. Our book study on creative conversations about race, our last meeting was very, very good, very, very interesting. We do not tape them, of course, so that everyone has the ability to speak what they, what they think. And in fact, the topic that came out of the last one was the quote, "To speak your truth." And it was a very interesting meeting. People did speak their truth and speak what was on their heart and on their mind. And we had quite a few breakthroughs of people that were not aware. That's why it's called the courageous conversations about race. It takes courage to speak your truth. And I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
I'm going to give a report tonight on EDAC. I think we're kind of short on time now.
We have an hour. No, just kidding. I like to eat between.
Now, I'll be giving a report tonight, so nothing right now.
Okay. Ms. Fisher, are you still here? Okay, I believe she's gone. I have nothing more to say. So, if we have comments, Mr. Prey Bruno?
I have none. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Atkins, please.
No, no comments, other than I need to touch base with a couple of you. I was able to make some phone calls to the majority earlier, but I know Ms. Vaughn, Ms. Gittens, and left a message with Ms. Givernelli. So, just a quick private conversation individually between, if you have the opportunity. That's it, though, in terms of what I have. No, no comments. Just thank you for the patience today. Our rehearsal did not take nearly as long as that, so that's part of the reason we misjudged.
Well, because your rehearsals do not have our questions in there.
Yeah, well, and the presentations, to be honest, did not last that long, near as long in the rehearsal, so.
Mr. Savage?
Thank you very much. This meeting is, oh, is there anything for good of the order before I adjourn the meeting? CNN, this meeting is adjourned at 4:52. Thank you. Yes. All right. Thank you.